Evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 10th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge, please. Begin with a few announcements. The emergency excerpts, I'd like to point them out on your left and right, and also out the back. Restrooms are out the back and to the left. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room if you hire a developer, even if you're a developer and are presenting the application. There are business cards at the back table as well, next to the sign and sheet in case you need contact information for the Planning Department. And also, on the back of the table are resolutions that will be read this evening along with a copy of the agenda. Please silence your cell phones so you don't disturb those who are presenting before the board. And also, please take any conversations you may wish to have out into the hallway behind and close the doors so that you don't disturb the progress of the meeting. Thank you very much. We have one meeting minutes for approval that Lisa sent out for review. Anyone have any questions, comments? Corrections?
No.
Okay. Take a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll move.
I'll move. Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the May 28th meeting minutes are approved. We've received a couple of correspondence letters from Carol McInnis regarding the Norbut Solar Farm application and also from the Town of Mendon for the Norbut Solar Farm application. I see Drew's here. You'd like to report from the board?
Good evening, Drew Kuzma, on the Victor Town Board. Just a couple of quick things of maybe potential interest for this board. At our last town board meeting during the morning on Monday, we did the approval for the imminent domain EDPL for the offer for the Lord &amp; Taylor property. So hopefully that will get things moving in a positive direction. I know it's been a work in progress for a handful of years now, and hopefully this is a good sign of things to come. If you haven't met him yet, Joe Georgia, part of our codes team, has come over from the village to the town. So he's now full time with us at the Town of Victor. At the town crossings for the Auburn Trail, most of our town roads, so not Route 251, but we're going to be adding flashing beacon signs for pedestrian crossings that comply with the current standard there. So increase safety along those crossings.
Is that Route 251 crossing not added because it's a state highway?
That's correct. So, and I did, I did speak with the Director of Parks and Rec about reaching out to the state. Certainly, that's a whole different process that will take longer.
Okay.
But I did ask that we try to pursue that as well. I think certainly that's a high hazard area. And also, I think that, from my opinion, we develop kind of that, a standard expectation of people are moving along the trail. They see a flashing sign, a flashing sign. They might expect to see flashing signs. So I think from just, you know, I use that multiple times a day. Because of the turn there, I think it naturally reduces some of the speed. And luckily, from my perspective, we don't see a lot of near misses or dangerous type encounters there. People are pretty good about it, but still, it's a, it's a fast road.
There's a lot of people that are coming from one direction that are courteous and stop, and the other ones, sometimes they don't? Or at least, it takes them a while to?
Yep. And I, and I know a big, you know, an issue across every town is, you know, an understanding of pedestrian versus bicyclists. Pedestrians have the right of way in the crosswalk, bicyclists riding their bike, you know, is a different set of standards. So I think bicyclists oftentimes go whizzing across thinking that they have the same rights as a pedestrian when they, when they do not.
Is the parking trail going to maintain the stop signs as well on the trail itself?
That's my understanding. I know that the signage there is something that the Parks and Rec upgrades from time to time. Those are typically purchases done by Parks and Rec in collaboration with them. But those also are important sinages, and, and that's something I think that from my experience, at least Brian does a really nice job keeping up with those signs.
Thank you.
There's a new committee from Parks and Rec out to do a design and spec for the Dryer Road Playground. That's its 20-year mark, so they're looking to provide some upgrades there. And, you know, just like other things nowadays, it's, uh, it's pretty expensive. And it was kind of a shock, sticker shock to me. Certainly, the, the range is going to be 500-plus for a new playground. So that's something they're at the very early stages of looking at and coming up with, you know, hopefully some savvy ways that we can fund that. County Road 9 and Gillis Road have, obviously, has been a high hazard mark for us for many, many years. Certainly, it exceeds the average accident rate. So I've been working with the Supervisor over the last year or so to identify some of the incidents that have occurred there in an effort to try to come up with some type of a traffic control or traffic calming measure to reduce the crash data there. It looks like the state will be providing some funding for a roundabout to be added to that. Certainly, it's a long ways off. It sounds like it might be like a 2029 project. But the Supervisor did speak with me about a small committee that will be formed of some key stakeholders in that as far as that process potentially in the next year or so getting going. So hopefully, you know, I know there's varying opinions about roundabouts, but I think anything we can do to reduce high-impact crashes would be, would be nice. So I don't know if, if it's desirable, but I know that it will reduce, you know, high severity injury and fatality crashes.
Although, on a Lino is fantastic, right here on 96, because it, you could never get out of Lino on a busy morning or evening, so.
Yeah. And in the first year of that, we did see a handful of crashes there, a couple of rollovers, you know, people just learning the dynamics of how to use it. But I think that since then, we've done fairly well. I know that, I know that it definitively lowers incidents of high injury and fatality crashes. So that's something I would certainly support. High Street is another. We've had a resident along High Street who's, who's been before the board a handful of times now, looking at speed reduction measures there. It's a very challenging thing because the flow on High Street seems to be pretty unremarkable. It's just vehicle speed, not complying with the posted speed. So there was some requests and there is consideration by the board now to do some traffic studies there. We just want to make sure that these bridge closures and the throughway projects underway don't affect the, the volumes and kind of sway that in a, in a incorrect direction. So we're going to wait for that to finish, and then probably sometime, I would assume next year, we might consider doing that because we want school to be in session as well for that.
So as we do have our developers, our applicants, prepare traffic studies, it sounds like we would like to get input from the board as to what future proposals there are, such as the roundabout at Gillis Road and 9.
Yeah, I definitely think that's a wise thing to consider. I know that one, one thing we've always talked about at this town level, and I'm sure everywhere, is, is vehicle speed is just so challenging. Is we can implement so many different devices and strategies and calming measures, but vehicle speed is, is, is substantial. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Drew.
Yep. And then the last one, we had some residents reach out about Shire Lane. That's one of our very unique areas in the town where it's a, it's a cut through between Willis Hill and Strong Road. It's a very straight up and over the hill, very wide road. There's no gutters, so it's almost, it feels like you're on a landing strip, you know, it's just a very wide road. And really is conducive for people that don't live there, cutting across and doing it at a pretty unreasonable speed in, in character to the neighborhood. So we're looking at some traffic calming measures that we can do to reduce those speeds along that road as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Drew. Keith's not here this evening. Adam will be available for questions. I don't expect that he has any.
I did.
To contribute, but Lisa's got an update for us.
So your next meeting is Wednesday, June 25th. Due to early voting, we are moved to Wednesday. So, yep.
Make sure Al knows.
Al's got it all set.
You'll see Housleton Enterprise Site Plan and Change of Use. You did see them a couple of meetings ago. They should be done with zoning board by next meeting, so they'll be back. They are located at 7447 State Route 96. The applicant is requesting approval to open a wholesale retail auto sales facility, which includes replacement of existing fence, adding fence, and replacement of lights and approved parking. And then you will also see tria site plan modification located 453 Fisher Road. Applicant is requesting approval to construct an eight-by-four foot duck coop, a four-foot-deep 10-by-9 man-made pond, and to replace an existing fence. They are in the LDD. This is why you're seeing them. And then any carryovers.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay. We have 10 items on the agenda this evening, but at least four of them are being removed because, or to the next meeting. The first one is Housleton. The last, three of the last four, 7, 8, 9, Timberview, Element, and Chick-fil-A have all been removed until at least the next meeting. So if anyone is here for those applications, we will not be reviewing them this evening. So the first item is number two, Hergesell Fence. It's an open public hearing. The applicant's requesting approval to install a chain link fence to mark the northern property line. The owner is Carl Hergesell, and it's at 118 Fisher's Road.
Lori Allen, co-owner of 118. I'm here to just give you an update on what's happened. And Carl will talk about what we're going to do.
I just want to make sure that's on.
Is it?
Can you hear him?
Hello?
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Just the, just the.
It's not tall enough.
Trying not to wander too far away. Thank you.
So let me give you a summary. We spent most of last summer, this is regards to our neighbor having encroached on an eighth of an acre of our land and cut down 25 of our trees. So we spent last summer really consulting with registered arborists, expert witnesses, to determine what case law tells us about what juries are doing in this situation. And pretty much what we found out consistently was restoration of the property was what would be the satisfactory response. No longer triple the, the value of the tree cut down without the owner's knowledge, but restoration seems to be what case law is about. So we put together a proposal through our attorney, Lou Moran, which we held off on giving to Elijah Wilton because he had a very severe automobile, or sorry, motorcycle accident last summer. And he's been fighting to keep his leg. So he's had nine surgeries, so we held off and did not deliver that proposal to him until November of last year. We heard zero. We heard zero from Mr. Wilton. We heard zero from Mr. Wilton's attorney. And when our attorney finally met up with him at some kind of common lawyer event in Monroe County, the attorney simply said, oh, he's fighting for his leg and he's not going to do any of this. So that left us with the situation of how do we in fact get what we would call a clean deed and clearly mark our property line? And after exploring landscaping and all of the above, understanding that we do not see this area, we decided that a fence was the, a four-foot chain link fence was the reasonable solution. So we would no longer have to worry about 275 feet to run. We talked with the zoning board and they did give us variants to be able to start the chain link fence at the very beginning of our land, just above the embankment on Fisher's Road.
But 15 feet away from the roadway.
Yeah. So now Carl will tell you. I just want, any questions on history or anything?
No, I appreciate the background.
Okay, thank you.
In the slideshow, if that can be moved backwards, there will be a picture of the sort of fence that we're, and one more, keep going back. Okay, stop there. Thank you. The chain link fence is, style we're talking about is on the left. Adam has submitted a letter to the board indicating that this kind of fence is fine from, I guess, the zoning board direction. No privacy slats on it, no top rail, no bottom rail, just, an old fence.
And it disappears into the grass, really. The, the chain link, it's kind of invisible almost from a distance, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's, that's true, too. Where it, where it's going to go, if we stick to the slide for a moment, is where this white rope is, which is currently a very temporary, temporary marker of the boundary of the two properties. And there are several other slides that show that, which we can look at in more detail if you wish. If we flip to this slide that has a map on it, and by the way, I have copies of my slides, if you would like them hard copy.
They all have that same packet in their packets.
Okay, so.
We've been able to look at these and review them, so we're familiar, let's put it that way. You're certainly welcome to.
All right.
Elaborate.
So the, the green, the thick green line up toward the top, between 92 Fisher and 118 Fisher, our property, is where the fence would be located. Starts on the right, above the embankment with Fisher Road, and runs about 250-odd feet. We don't, we do not have a site plan for it at this time. We were told we needed one last Friday. Not enough time to do one. But we are currently searching for a firm that can do that. LaBella cannot do it, conflict of interest. Thornton Engineering, which, who's involved with 92, can't do it. So we've gone back to O'Neill-Rodak and we're trying to work with them. Last March, they did a complete survey of our entire property, which really was instigated by this particular problem. We needed it anyway, but. So what questions do you have?
No?
None. Sad that it's come to us.
Yeah. Al?
Echoes Joe's comments.
Okay. Scott?
Sure.
We want a site plan. Particularly given who our neighbor is, we want a site plan because we want to make sure that the fence is in absolute perfect order. Our surveyors are short-staffed right now. They haven't even gotten back to us. Keith Maynard suggested they would be the perfect people to work with.
I agree.
Because they've got all of our information. It would probably only take them a couple hours. We are seeking provisional approval from you, subject to Adam, Adam's approval of the site plan, so we don't have to keep bouncing back onto your agenda. We definitely want this site plan. The other variable here is that Mr. Wilton's landscaper called me and said that he had authorized them to remove the eight-and-a-half feet of, on our property of that huge stone installation. He wasn't sure when they were going to get around to it. And that's where unfortunately Elijah Wilton still has a card he's playing in terms of control. I know I sound jaded, but wouldn't you? And so I'm going to see if there's any way that I can get more information from the landscaper. I have not talked with Mr. Wilton directly.
Unfortunately, we really can't help you with that. I understand your total position.
We understand that, yeah.
And I appreciate the background, so.
Yeah.
And understand your, where you are. And I, I don't think that's going to be an issue for us, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
All right, Scott?
I have no issues. Nothing.
Yeah. My, my first thought when I saw the chain link fence was, I think they're ugly, but it, like I said earlier, it kind of disappears. And then, and I don't know how much maintenance you would do with it, but I would have probably put a bunch of stones along there as a kind of a marker. But it sounds like you've already discussed that, that or another option for fences that might be easier to maintain, but, you know.
Everything else we thought about or discussed tended to be a lot more expensive.
Yeah, and we've already put out $15,000 in this situation.
Understood. So, yeah, I have no objection to this.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, so I do need to open up if anyone's here that wishes to comment and ask questions of the board or the applicant. Seeing none, I offer a motion for.
Move to close.
Public hearing, Joe and Al. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing's closed. We do have a draft resolution, so I believe it should address.
So this whole pattern, the initiative we're wanting to take, subject to having a proper site plan, is what we're agreeing to?
Let's see. It's a condition of LaBella, in their letter, so that'll be addressed.
Okay.
So with this application number 16SP2025, Hergesell Fence, 118 Fisher Road, whereas the Planning Board made the following findings a fact, and there are eight of them, now therefore be it resolved that the application of Carl Hergesell, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yep.
Okay. Site plan entitled Hergesell Fence, located in the limited development district received by the Planning Board application, Planning Board, April 28th, 2025. Planning Board Application 16SP2025 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid for fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25th, 1996. Number two, that comments from LaBella Associates dated June 10th, 2025 be addressed. And at this point, I should have offered Wes an opportunity to comment.
Our only, LaBella's only comment, again, our letter was dated June 3rd, 2025. Our only comment was that we wanted to see the, the applicant have a, a full site plan that would be, if it were to be approved, that it would be signed by the Planning Board Chair, because that serves as, you know, a final, you know, the approved site plan, right? And it's, it's a, it's a document that the property owner can hold on to and, and show, you know, any future real estate buyers or whoever. Here's, here's our, here's our parcel boundary, here's the fence.
Yeah, this defends you as much as anybody, you know, really, so. And once that comes in, I'll sign it, and you guys should be good to go. Sounds like you won't be able to do anything until the landscaping has been done anyway.
That's absolutely correct.
I suspect we'll see a drawing before you see action out there, but.
Yep.
Stranger things have happened. So, ongoing conditions, that site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Number two, that the applicant comply with the following zoning board appeals, variances, conditions granted on June 2nd, 2025. That, A, that the fence will be chain link fence, B, that there will be no privacy slats, and C, that the fence will only be four feet high, which you've all, you stated all three.
Agreed.
That a building permit be obtained for the fence prior to construction and be further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move it.
Scott moves.
Aye.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
For zero.
Thank you very much.
Second item tonight, Warner Pole Barn, 8018 Taylor Road. Owner, Michelle Warner. Tax map 260013220. Application 17SP2025, applicant's requesting approval to construct a 2,400-square-foot barn for personal use. Evening.
How's it going? Dylan Warner.
Like to share your, your plans with the board and we can review it?
Pole barn for personal projects, storage, general things of that nature. No business, no, nothing like that.
Yeah. You're here because it's more than 1,000 square feet, so that's why. Here's a laser pointer up there if you want to show us where your house, mostly for the meeting here, where your house and the barn is being proposed.
So this is sideways, there's Taylor Road's there. Right in there is where the pole barn will be. There's the house. And I attached notes that they had questions on, about drainage. This area right here is already compacted gravel. That was already there when we bought the place. So depending on how the drainage is, I'll add drain tile on the ground if I need to, or whatever. Probably run electric back to it. Maybe water. Whatever I can or can't do, so. All I got.
Any questions from the board? Joe, you want to start?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, Al?
Yeah, do you have any elevation views of what the pole barn will look like?
Um, it will be 18-foot to the eaves, and with the truss, I think it was around 26-foot total height.
Architectural style, would it be, what type of siding, roof, colors?
Tin, normal tin, probably a darker, earthier color. Haven't decided yet, gray, green, maybe a darker brown.
Okay. I mean, it seems like it should be adequate, but I mean, again, we would typically see some type of rendering of the elevation.
Yeah, I mean, I came ask what I needed and I submitted what I needed. If you need more, just let me know.
And then Wes, again, if the drawing would be sufficient for a site plan or if it's not required?
Yeah, well, I think that's something to, to think about here in terms of topography. I don't know what the, the lay of the land is there with the topography. Is there a side lot line swale between your property and the property to the east?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I set it off at 18-foot. Measured from where, when we bought it, it was surveyed, so measured from, there's stakes that go down. Measured the 15-foot and added to get 18.
Yeah.
If I need to have an engineer firm do another site survey and layout, then I will.
I guess, are there, is there any potential for roof drainage to flow onto adjoining properties?
Well, it's going to run downspouts, like I said, and then however that goes. If I'll add, need to add drainage to the pond there.
Yeah.
Like the house does, and I will.
Okay. What's the, does, does the overall topography kind of all flow towards the pond? The surface drainage?
Surface of the pond is a little higher than back there, so I may have to, like I said, do that. But I've not noticed any pooling water back there with the rain we've got or any of that.
Do we have any site pictures for this application, or no?
No, but he's, he can provide them. So I know you've been working with an architect, so.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to see the building elevations, we can provide that for the next meeting or anything else that you need.
Typically, if you had a design of a barn in mind, a supplier, a fabricator, whatever, standard plans, those probably would suffice.
Finger lacing instruction, they're drafting them up.
You know, if it shows the kind of construction and the size, the height of the roof peak.
Yeah, yeah.
Things like that. I think we would like to see that information. Sounds like you have no problem doing that, which is great. Site plan itself, in order for us to assess that runoff is being handled appropriately, you'd need that survey at least in the area surrounding the barn and, you know, the driveway and maybe where it's being directed to, pond. Anything else, Wes, that you can think of it?
Yeah, I guess my, that would be my main concern is, I guess, just the, the topography around the barn and, and where the surface water would be, would be headed, or the roof drainage. And if there was a need to do anything with, with drain tile, that could be identified on a site plan. But I was also going to try to bring up the.
Ariel?
Yeah, the, the contouring for, on the encore website.
Yeah. Wes has got his magic tricks over here, so. He'll get us something visual up on the screen.
Watch him on yourselves.
I may have caught him a little off guard. I put him on a meeting sooner than he thought, so.
Not a problem. Don't worry about it. See everything when you come back. Uh, Scott?
I don't, I don't really have any comments that are much different than what's been expressed so far. I mean, I think, I understand the intent. I think we would like to see more detail on these areas that we typically are concerned with.
I see that you have a well on site right near that pad. Is that an active well for your home?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not using public water off of Taylor Road? Okay. Are all houses on wells?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Yeah, I know that the development across the street is public water.
Yeah. Oh, no, they put in a well credit for all the.
Put in wells, yeah, right. Oh, that's 1086, yep. So this is a public hearing. We might as well open it up to the public for questions while Wes is coming up with his plan. Is there anyone that has a question for the applicant or this, the board for this application? Sarah, come on up. Name, address, and question. Or comment.
My name is Bill Kaiser. My wife Joan and I live at 8008. My wife Joan and I live at eight zero zero eight Taylor Road, which is the adjoining property to the east of the Warners. My main concern in all of this is our house sits high above their house and the proposed lot. And we have six large picture windows, which essentially face the proposed building. There is a, we have a hedgerow on our side of the property lot, which consists of basically deciduous vegetation. During the summer, even now, it blocks, it would block a portion of, of this proposed building. But during the winter, when the leaves are off, it would be in full view. So I'm concerned about that. At my request, I met with Dylan Warner yesterday, and he discussed what he had in mind. He was, he basically went over the forty by sixty foot pole barn. He gave some indication of the, of the, of the doors. He proposing to put in sliding barn door type access on the north side, no, the
West side? Away from your house, basically?
Be facing the road. Be facing Taylor Road.
On the narrow side of the barn, though.
On the narrow side of the barn.
Okay, I'm with you there.
And he said, and a pedestrian door on the west side, and no other windows or doors. He said that he was going to be using it for storage, which would include an existing non-operating pickup truck and passenger car. And he talked about future adult toys like four wheelers and that sort of thing. He said he had no interest, I specifically asked him, do you intend to conduct your present occupation, which is repairing heavy equipment? Do you propose to pursue that in this barn? And he said, no, absolutely not.
That would be a business that he wasn't zoned for at the parcel.
Right, right.
But, I mean, if he has hobbies, I suppose.
I don't think it would be compatible with an R two neighborhood. He mentioned the dark, that he's considering the dark brown color, which he felt would blend in with the woods. I guess I need further details on, on the building in order to make an informed opinion.
As do we, which is what we have, we are requesting.
And I think it should include a survey topological map showing elevations at the four corners of each, of the building. I happen to know that the previous owner, who had dreams of storing heavy tree maintenance equipment on the premises, had talked with a professional contractor, and he said that due to the slope of the land, that it would be impractical without extensive excavating or filling to, to provide a, a level pad for this building to sit on. It was a little, a little larger than what Dylan is proposing. But today I looked in my files and I found a, a contour map for the subdivision. And I'd be glad to share that with you, I got it right from the town a couple of years ago. And it shows a gradual slope from, let me get the directions right, from the Taylor Road. It slopes north and west.
So the contours are, Wes has got the drawing of the
Okay.
G I S plan up, and you can see the yellow contours through here, and it's confirming what you're just talking about. Here's the pad, I think, where the barn is gonna go. Your house is down here, is that correct?
That's right, that, yeah, that's our house.
So it's pretty far back, and these contours sort of flatten out across that pad.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry, I have hearing aids and
So hopefully you can hear me now. The pad is a fair distance from your house. You can see the contours as you're talking sloping down towards that property from your house, and then it levels, levels out somewhat, it's flatter in this area, so. That's what the discussion we just had with the applicant was, we really need some information about how he's planning on managing the drainage runoff around the barn and how that could be constructed. So, and in addition to that, what is the barn designed to look like? You know, what's the construction, what's the size of it, height, all of that? So, once that happens, and we will see the elevation of the barn foundation, I expect, in that plan that he prepares. And then you can relate that to where your, the elevations where your house is.
Okay.
And hopefully that'll give you a sense of how high up you are compared to where your barn's gonna be.
Right.
So, and that, that will happen the next time, I believe, he comes in with that information.
Okay, okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that, that, that's, I would like to see that. He also mentioned that, that his plan was to put up the shell immediately. And to put the concrete floor inside and the insulation and partitions or whatever he was gonna deal, deal with at a later date. And I, I, I'm not in favor of that. I, I think it should all be done in one operation within a reasonable timeframe.
Okay.
Otherwise it drags on and everything happens. He did mention, well, the plans have the downspouts to the rear of the, to the north of the building. And I, I don't think there'd be any problem, problem with drainage. I think that would just drain into the woods. So I'm concerned with, with the physical ability to, to site a pole barn on that sloping lot. That's to be determined, I guess.
I suspect his plans will show how he proposes to do that, and we can certainly review and comment on that as well.
Okay. So I guess I have no further comment, I don't have enough equipment to form an informed decision
Okay.
Or an opinion at this point.
Well, we'll be glad to entertain any comments you have once you've seen that
Okay.
At the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Warner, any comments to that? You need to be up at the microphone before you say anything. Thank you.
None more than we discussed. I mean, and I want to say that rear elevation sits around six hundred and thirty feet above sea level, according to maps I've looked at, but I know it's about thirty foot lower than the road, but
And his house is
That will
Wes, can you get a sense of how high off his house is compared to the barn proposed? No, the neighbors?
This one?
Yeah.
Are those two foot contour intervals?
Uh, these are one foot contours.
Are they?
I mean, just counting contours, it's probably anywhere from ten, ten to thirteen feet lower in elevation, the
From his
Pad, the pad site, ten, ten to thirteen feet below where this house is. Just casual observation.
Do you have a sense of where the eaves would be from the ground?
Oh, yeah, about eighteen foot.
So you're going up eighteen feet and then the roof?
Yeah, and then the truss, and it, and I think that was around twenty six foot total height.
Okay.
According to that contractor. I think, I think Victor's a thirty foot max.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew it was getting close, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So he's gonna, from, from grade level of his house, we're talking another ten feet probably to the peak? So. Are you trying to go back in time?
I've just, just showing the difference, because some of the, some of these aerials have foliage on, right? So this particular one has foliage on, and then I think a more recent one, leaf off.
Oh, right. Well, there's some woods between the properties. Looks like trees and brush hedge, she said.
Like the vegetation he described, and quite a bit of it.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from those in the audience or? So I'll leave the public hearing open to allow for comment, once we get more information. Otherwise, unless you have anything for us, see you when you get a chance to.
Yeah. Guys could email me with your requests and whatnot for
Lisa?
I can email you tomorrow, yeah, exactly what they're looking for, and then if you're right, we can put you on the next meeting
All right.
On Wednesday.
Sounds good.
In two weeks.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next one, Keystone Fireworks tent. Relatively annual occurrence. Good evening.
Hi, Charity Chrysler Keystone Fireworks, just looking for an extension of permission for seven one six one, the vacant lot that we've been at for the past few years. We do have a contract with the owner till two thousand twenty seven, and seeking approval from you guys. Set up's the same, nothing's really changed.
Okay. Questions, Joe?
It's, been there before, we've had no issues, it seems to work pretty well.
Yeah, Al?
No issues.
Scott?
No issues.
Okay, I don't have any issues either, it's a public hearing, anyone else have any comments, questions for the applicant? All right, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Al moves?
Second.
So second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed, any other comments, discussion, Wes, anything from your perspective? I didn't think so, but you guys have done a good job with it in the past, so I think you're feeling that from our response. So we do have a resolution for you. And this is Keystone, right?
Yes.
There's another one.
Bad time of the year.
It is. So, application eighteen S P twenty twenty five and four S U twenty twenty five, whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, there are ten of them, resolve that the application of Keystone Novelty's distributors receiving, received by the planning board, May sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Planning board site plan application eighteen S P twenty twenty five and special use application for S U twenty twenty five be approved with the following conditions. Number one, peddler solicitor's license be obtained from the town clerk prior to erecting the tent and for sales. Number two, that if the peddler solicitor's license is suspended, the tent will be removed at the owner's expense within ten days. Number three, that the hours of operation from June twenty third to July second, is that correct?
Uh, fifth.
To be nine AM, nine PM. July third and fourth be nine AM to ten thirty PM. Number four, the site plan approval will be rescinded within ten days of the filing of a formal complaint to the code enforcement officer if said complaint is not resolved within that ten day period. Number five, that in the event lighting is desired, it will be to the code compliant and possibly be required to be reviewed by the planning board. Is there any lighting planned? I mean, ten PM's pretty late and dark in a couple of nights.
We just, the light that is inside the tent for workers and customers, but otherwise, no, nothing.
No exterior?
No.
Okay.
No spotlights.
So number six, that any temporary signage be removed from the site entrance during non-business hours, you know, such as directional signs or, you know, A-frames and stuff, within the state route at ninety six right of way per town code. Number seven, that there be a limit of two signs on the tent and shall be compliant with town code, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter.
I just want to make a note that the board understand number three, they're asking for another three year.
Three years, okay, thanks.
Just like they have in the past.
So this is a three year term. You guys, everyone's on board with that? So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move it.
Al moves?
Second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, another one, T N T Fireworks tent, number five. So this is at, being proposed at East Gate Square, I think it is. Applicants requesting approval to set up a twenty by forty tent to operate a retail sale of sparkler products for the Fourth of July holiday from June twentieth to July fifth. Operating hours will be from nine AM to ten PM daily, and Forty Square Drive, so, good evening.
Hi, I'm Amanda Gump, I am from T N T Fireworks. Normally, we have been a little further down the road, closer towards the Walmart there. With the construction, we have moved up the road a bit, so that is big, the biggest difference between there. One thing that I did want to mention, our days are going to change a little because our operator is a teacher, and so they won't be available until the twenty seventh, so we're gonna run the twenty seventh through the fifth.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. And so if you could discuss how you see the parking and flow around your tent here versus over by these, Victor Crossing Commons, I guess that is, or Victor Commons?
There's definitely a lot better flow, you know, so it'll be safer for people going in and out and such as well, so, and it does increase visibility for us as well.
And that's right in front of the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond former store, correct?
I believe that that was what was there.
Questions? All right, reduce, Scott, anything?
Last time I drove through there, there wasn't a lot of traffic, so I assume this is, you know, a good, good use for what you're proposing. I don't see any conflicts with traffic or anything like that. I was wondering what you're gonna do this year with that other site under construction.
Yeah, I was here a few months ago and I went, oh boy, construction, so this is our backup plan.
But I, I don't think there were any issues from last year to my recollection, so if you can proceed the same way, I have no problem.
Is this a one year application, Lisa?
One year, yes.
New site and all, so. Joe?
I think actually you've kind of stumbled on a better property, we don't have to have the neighbors' concerns now, there's no neighbors to be potentially disturbed, so I think it's a, it's a win.
Okay, anything else? Al?
Yeah, just one question, do you intend to put any temporary bollards or anything around it to avoid a car?
We can absolutely do that, if that is something the board would like.
Because it's so wide open, someone
Right.
Purposeful or unpurposeful, it might be a good idea.
Absolutely, we can manage that.
Benefits in the back part of the lot, but still, I totally understand that, the concern, it's a good point, so.
But I have no, no issues.
Okay. Wes, any thoughts or?
No.
Not really anything that we needed to look at probably, so. Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone here have any questions? For the applicant? Okay. Fireworks it is, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Move to close.
Scott got it, Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, anything else?
Could we just modify number two on the findings of fact to change the operating date?
Yeah, okay, I think Lisa got that, so. All right. So, resolution for T N T Fireworks tent, Forty Square Drive. Whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and with the change noted, number two, there are nine of them. uh, resolve that the application of the American promotional events received by planning board, uh, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, planning board site plan application nineteen S B two thousand twenty-five, and special use application five S U two thousand twenty-five be approved with the following conditions. One, that a peddler's solicitor's license be obtained from the town clerk prior to erecting tent and sales. Number two, that if the peddler solicitor's license is suspended, the tent will be removed at the owner's expense within ten days. Number three, that hours of operation from June twenty-seventh, or twenty-seventh, uh, to July fifth be nine AM to ten PM. Number four, that the site plan approval will be rescinded within ten days of the filing of a formal complaint that to the code enforcement officer if said complaint is not resolved within that ten-day period. Number five, that in event lighting is desired, it will be, it will need to be code compliant and possibly be required to be reviewed by the planning board. Speaking of lighting, is the tent going to be anywhere near, I hope you have some lighting nearby in the parking lot?
I'm not sure about that, but most of the time, they're going to be closed before, you know, it gets too dark. If it's, um, weather-related and it's dark, we have inside tent lights, so.
Okay, thanks. Number six, that any temporary signage be removed from the site entrance during non-business hours and shall not be placed within state route ninety-six, ninety-six right-of-way or per town code. That probably isn't going to be, unless you had stuff, do you anticipate any signage on ninety-six as it goes by that site down below?
No, not down below. We would probably put them up at the top.
Probably outside the right-of-way. So you may not end up with any conflicts there. So, uh, number seven, that there be a limit of two signs on the tent and shall be compliant with the town code, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. Say that ten times fast. On that resolution, do your motion for approval? Al moves.
I'll second.
Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
See you next year.
Okay, um, two more items. Number six, Norbit Solar Farm. This is an open public hearing. Uh, this is on Main Street Fishers, near the Monroe County line, or on it. Uh, owner, Fishers Hollow LLC, applicants requesting approval to develop four-point-four-two-eight megawatt AC solar uh, energy facility on thirty-nine, four-point-nine-three acre parcel consisting of forest and meadow land. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Cretico, so I'm with BME Associates. Nice to see you all. Uh, here with me this evening is Victor Chacha from Norbit Solar Farms. They are the applicant, and they're also the owner of the property now. As Mr. Logan just mentioned, um, we are, this is kind of a rehash of a project that we submitted, uh, I believe it was early to, last year. I think we were in front of you guys in March of twenty-four. Shortly after that, the town went into your moratorium, updated the code, um, and then we kind of sat on it for a little bit before we went through, updated all the application materials to be compliant with the code. We also tried to incorporate all the town staff comments that we had to the best of our ability from the last round to try and, um, just get the project closer to a finish point.
So as a clarification for myself, I had recused myself to that meeting based on the involvement of the firm I was working with at the time. I noticed that the engineering has changed quite a bit, uh, so, you know, the different engineers involved, so, um, and I retired. So I don't need to recuse myself for this particular application.
Perfect.
So, anyway, just want to get that out there.
Yeah, so from, uh, I'll give you guys kind of an update, because obviously it's been over a year now at this point. Um, really, kind of the big changes from a site land use standpoint, um, from the code updates, uh, really just kind of with the setbacks. A lot of the other language and stuff is just clarification. Um, I think the big thing that changed was we now have a hundred-foot setback on all property sides, whereas before we were, had to be compliant with the underlying zoning for accessory structures. So I believe it was like ten or fifteen. Um, but now we have a hundred-foot setback. We did confirm with code enforcement that that is to the solar panels. Um, so all our solar panels are, are more than a hundred feet, um, inside the property. We're pretty close to that because of the, you know, constraint, the, the change in that put on us. Um, then outside of that, we generally have a twenty-foot perimeter access drive around all those panels, and then our perimeter fence, agricultural style fence, wires, wood posts. Um, then we'll have a, obviously, a gate at the front for this. Um, we did also talk with code enforcement about that, and they told us we were allowed to comply with town standards, and we could have put the fence, um, up to about a foot from the property line. However, we don't generally do that. We only extra length, no reason to do that, and extra area just to maintain. Besides that, there is one other setback that got added, that is the three-hundred-foot residential setback from non-participating residences. Um, so this is from their primary structure. This happens at two locations on our site, uh, one to the southeast and one to the west. Um, you can kind of see in our site now where it kind of bubbles out on the east side and the west side a little bit. Um, every other home is further away from that, so we don't have any issues with that. That, we're not proposing any development in those areas at all currently. Uh, we're not taking down any vegetation, not putting the fence in there. We're going to keep that twenty-foot perimeter drive outside of that. So we're really leaving those in their preserved states. There's our existing conditions and demolition plan. You really can see where the two bubbles from the adjacent homes, um, come into our site. The home to the east, which is on the lower portion of the page there, um, there is some pretty good brush along that entire line. We were, oh.
You've got one there.
Thank you. Um, so this is the three-hundred-foot buffer to the home to the east, which sits right here. This is a two-story home. Uh, there's a lot of brush along this side. The brush actually sits pretty high. Um, one of the responses to the landscape consultant's comments actually included a reference picture, which sits roughly from our tractor-trailer turnaround. I think there was two, like one here and one here, pointing at that house. And basically what it shows is that existing brush line during a leaf-off condition, this is like early April when we, um, last were on site, you really can't see through that at all. So right now, today, you can't see through it at all. It becomes very opaque, um, during leaf-on conditions. And then we also have, uh, this is more of a taller brush with a lot of scattered trees. There are a couple in there that are probably over six inches in diameter, um, but this is going to be fully maintained through there. So leaf-off conditions, you may have some scattered views through there, but leaf-on conditions, like currently, there's very limited views of that. Besides that, our design's very consistent. Um, if you don't mind flipping to one with the layout, I can kind of talk through a couple of points. Um, so with, uh, the changes, obviously, we kind of got pinched in a little bit east and west here. So our layout ended up, um, kind of moving south, obviously, to keep the same number of panels, uh, keep the project viable on our end. Uh, the equipment pads slid a little bit south as well, and then our turnaround as well, so we have a little bit less gravel drive. Right now, we're basically rebuilding about seven-hundred feet of the existing drive, which ends about right there. It's just a broken asphalt gravel drive, hasn't been touched in a long time. And then we're going to add about seven-hundred more feet of gravel drive up here, as well as a full turnaround for tractor-trailers, because that's what the equipment loads in, so we just make sure that we can get that vehicle in to the site. So obviously, it would accommodate the town's, uh, fire emergency services, uh, fire trucks, things like that. Um, and it's designed to hold, you know, support our tractor-trailers loaded, so, um, it will certainly meet the HS twenty loading standards for the fire department. We also adjusted some comments in response to the fire marshal comments, um, and kind of their commentary. They had questions and concerns about fire, um, fighting, if it ever happened on the property. We actually have a meeting set up with them this Thursday to kind of review their comments offline specifically, to make sure that we're providing them enough information, education, that they're comfortable with the design, and then to kind of discuss their comments. When we adjusted this, we created as much space so we could keep this kind of central access corridor. We would like to vegetate this, so like we do on all our other projects. We'll have, um, lines, but this is about twenty-five, twenty-six feet wide. So you could certainly get a small vehicle, an ATV, or anything through there, um, for emergency access, for, you know, smaller equipment, things of that nature. The rest of the materials with the panels, again, they're non-combustible. The only things that are subject to anything are the transformers, inverters, which are basically tucked right here by our tractor-trailer turnaround, so very accessible, um, very easy to, to get to if there's an emergency. From those, uh, basically, all the wires from all the panels get routed to this. Then we'll have a main, um, main voltage trench coming back out. And then down by the road, we'll have a series of poles, like you would see, there's, I think, there's five to six, um, just typical utility poles with transformers sitting on them. And that's the interconnection, how two, two or three are typically owned by Norbit, and then the last two are typically owned by the public utility company as they kind of transition meter, um, you know, facilitate some of the functions of the equipment. And Victor can certainly get into detail on that a little bit more if you need. Um, in regards to site clearing, we're very consistent with what we were doing before. Uh, we're actually a little bit less now that we're obviously preserving this. And now that we have the hundred-foot setback, we're actually a little bit further away from the northern property, and we don't need to screen anything from the north, because the sun's obviously south of us, so we have a little bit, uh, less vegetation removal there as well. Otherwise, the, um, intent is really the same, uh, with this now for stormwater. We still have a little facility that sits kind of right here on the top of the hill, right where the existing drive ends. We are going to cut in a drainage swale on the east side of our access drive that will convey water runoff from our new gravel drive to this facility. Um, it's a bioretention type facility with a little bit of extra storage. Uh, it basically detains the tenure event, puts it through the three-inch orifice. So we're basically trying to very minimize the runoff from our constructed activities. Everything else, uh, is, follows the DEC's current, current guidance. It actually changed a little bit with the new general permit that came out. It's formalized in the appendix B, type table one, table two activities somewhat. Um, and then there's some additional guidance that the DEC has been reviewing, um, in some training seminars and things of that nature. Um, so we've been designing per that, and we can certainly talk with the, the region or provide you contacts with that, but we've have several other projects engaged in this region of the DEC office. Um, and if you all know Luke Scannell at all, um, we've been in regular, uh, contact with him just to make sure that we're meeting those design standards. Basically, it's maintain everything as sheet flow, keep it vegetated, and if you do that, the panels don't count as impervious surface. So really, the only, um, new construction that we're actually doing here is about seven-hundred feet of gravel driveway. So no different than any sort of long, single-family home in terms of the impervious impacts, as well as the, um, whatever the equipment pads will sit on, you know, relatively minor. Rose control for the project's basic, uh, rose and sill fence around the perimeter, check dams where we need to, construction entrance, concrete washout, uh, nothing there, nothing special. Um, in terms of wetlands, uh, we are, uh, we do have a couple isolated wetlands. We delineated these, I believe, back in two thousand twenty-three. We did submit to the Army Corps for determination. However, when we went on pause, we had them pause. Um, generally, what they'll do is if we're not proposing any work in the wetlands, they'll issue a PJD, and then we don't need to talk to them anymore. However, now that we've pinched in, we're pushing south a little bit, so we are going to, um, look to get an AJD, an approved jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps. Uh, we believe they're isolated. We assume that they'll follow along with that. However, if they don't, um, what we're doing is still allowed. We are allowed to drive posts in wetland areas. Um, it does not count as disturbance. We have to work on mats and take some other, uh, construction measures to make sure we don't result in a loss of the wetlands. Uh, but the driving of posts is allowed within federal wetlands, and we are allowed to trench through them, um, under nationwide permit, uh, fifty-seven, I believe, which allows for electrical line installation. Same thing, what we do is we can take the material out, set it on the mats, put the trench in, put the material back, reseed it. We don't actually result in any loss, so they don't typically require a permit for those. Um, but if they do, it would be covered under that nationwide permit, and we'll obviously provide all that documentation to you guys. Uh, we did also submit for the new DEC, um, wetland determination. Our ninety days is actually up tomorrow, so we'll be submitting the ten-day notice, because those have not come back on any project to date within that timeframe as of now. But we expect that they'll just come back and say that we don't, they don't have any state wetlands on here. And then we'll, again, provide that documentation to you guys. Uh, SHPO is all done. Uh, we have a no-impact letter. It was included in the report of our application, so we don't have any historical, items with the site that we need to address, and similarly with endangering plants and animals, there aren't any on the site. Um, as one of the, um, items that we did include with our application materials, we included a tree clearing exhibit. Uh, one of the code items in, uh, the new solar code, uh, requests a tree survey of the property with trees identified six inches and greater on it. I talked with code enforcement, um, before we submitted the application, just to kind of understand the intent, because there's another line of the code which says that we can't remove more than ten percent of the trees from the total property area. And we were just trying to understand how they were going to imply that, whether it was, you know, a square foot of a six-inch tree, you know, one square feet or something, or if this was kind of more of the wooded areas, how much woods are we removing? So, um, we talked through with code enforcement, they kind of set, interpreted that it was based on the, the land use, the wooded areas. So what we did was, uh, me and one of my other engineers, we actually took a handheld GPS out there and walked, uh, the perimeter of the site to basically kind of include the tree line, which is what that exhibits based on, to show how that we're clearing this. Obviously, if the town is still looking for, um, a tree survey to identify those, we can certainly do it. The site is a little bit rough to manage. If you recall, it's, uh, there's a good portion of meadow at the southern end of this, and then there's some very dense brush that's actually pretty hard to walk through unless you're on one of the trails there. And then once you get to the perimeter, it transitioned into some more full-growth wooded vegetation. Um, so we can, you know, provide whatever information you guys want that would, uh, you'd be looking forward to that. But I think we were trying to satisfy the intent of the code by providing that documentation to you upfront. Um, as part of the application, we also updated the noise, view shot and clink glare studies. I think those are kind of the things that a lot of the municipalities are relatively concerned with, with these type of projects. Uh, the noise study's pretty straightforward. Uh, what we do is we model, um, the noise generated for the inverters and transformers. Generally, it's the inverters that make the buzz during daylight hours, only when it's nighttime, there's no noise at all, because there's no sun causing any power generation or inverting. Uh, the inverters are, we do a simple, uh, equation for this. Basically, we, um, model the noise generated from this. We assume there's no obstructions, there's no panels, there's no vegetations, and then we use the, the very basic logarithmic noise equation for how much it diminishes, um, over every time the distance doubles. As part of that, there's, there's four receptors that we typically set, one at the north, east, south, and west corners of the property, and we model the noise there. For this one, we've also included a receptor at the two closest residents, the ones that cause the three-hundred-foot buffer, so the one to the southeast, as well as the one to the west of us. Uh, what that shows is that the four receptors at the property line were below forty-five DBA, which is what the DEC classifies as quiet rural area. Um, so, and then obviously, as you can increase distance, you're going to be less. And again, this, this doesn't factor into account that there's brush in the way, that there's vegetation in the way, that there's panels, all these panels breaking up the noise that would be carried, and the inverters sit below the elevations of the panels, so they definitely would be obstructions of that, because their panels are only a max of twelve feet, and they're static, so they're always going to be, uh, in the way. The view shed study is very consistent with the previous middle as well, um, except the National Land Cover Database did update their wooded areas, so what we do with these view shed studies is we base the wooded areas based on only the National Land Cover Database and what they classify as wooded areas. That is what they determined to be opaque and not visible through at any time of the year. If you look in our view shed study, there's three exhibits that are included. One is a bare earth. That one's basically, you know, if all the trees everywhere got cut down, where you'd be able to see this. You'd obviously be able to see it from quite a ways. Um, the second one is a vegetated condition, and the third exhibit in there is what the National Land Cover Database actually includes as vegetated areas. So you can see there's a lot of vegetation that isn't modeled in that. Um, and then what we use that for is we kind of look where that would possibly identify visibility, um, and that's what's reflected on that vegetated condition map. If you go out to the site today, I'm ninety-nine percent confident you can't see this from anywhere, even when the locations that it says that, um, because this, again, the view shed doesn't take into account houses, doesn't take into account individual rows of trees, anything like that. Um, so the views it kind of shows are, um, a little ways down to the east on, uh, or headed to the east, back toward ninety-six. Again, you can't see past the property line because of the brush, which is kind of in that photo that we provided regarding the landscape to the east. And the visibility to the west, basically, kind of shoots right down, I believe it's, uh, Tiny Men? Yeah, Tiny Men Way. And again, it shows visibility through that area, but if you go to the end of that cul-de-sac, you can't see the last two houses, which is this one and this one. The cul-de-sac ends kind of in here. Every house on that whole street has trees between it, and again, you're, you basically have zero visibility. There's nothing down as you get, um, further to the west either. Uh, the glare study is kind of based off of the view shed study, so when we do the view shed study, any locations that we have, visibility identified based on the National Land Cover Database, we then model through glare. However, the glare study takes into account the same assumptions, that there's no obstructions, there's no other trees, et cetera, and they have a clear view line of sight based on that visibility. All the houses in the glare that got identified is everything to the west of our site. There's no, you, I mean, maybe the last house on the very end might have some limited visibility during leaf-off conditions, but none of the other homes that way are going to have any visibility, because the. visibility, because the last house is going to block all the rest of the houses. And if, you know, if you take the viewshed map and just do a drive-by the site and just kind of look at those couple areas, it's very easy to tell that you're not going to have any visibility of sight. Besides that, we were in front of the county planning board last year before the moratorium. They returned this as a Type 1 action. We were scheduled to be on their meeting tomorrow night, as well as their workshop today. However, they canceled their meetings this month, and they're not meeting until next month. But we don't expect that they would return this as a Type 2 action in their view for any reason they don't understand what county-wide impacts there could possibly be for something like this. Besides that, we just wanted to kind of confirm with you guys if we're going to be reusing the lead, secret lead agency designation that you guys started last year, carrying that forward, or if you guys would be reissuing that? That would be our kind of one question.
Yeah, fair question. And we did talk about that with staff, and I think what we're going to do is send an updated letter to all of the involved agencies, letting them know that, you know, last year it was agreed that the town planning board was going to be lead agency, and give them a copy. When we, when the town transmit this letter to them, give them a copy of the updated EAF, right? Because the project has changed a little bit, right? So we want to afford them the opportunity just to, you know, see the updated EAF, any of the updated project information, not necessarily do a complete new coordination with lead agencies or with the involved agencies, but just give them a courtesy letter. Here's where we're at. If you have any objections, just let us know. But I don't see a need to do another lead agency coordination process.
Yep, and that's completely fine with us and Norma as well. So we have no issues with that plan of attack. And then, besides that, we understand, or don't expect you guys to take any other action tonight. We wouldn't have anyways because of county planning being tomorrow. But obviously, I would like to get your guys' input, comments, questions, other things you might be looking for, so we can provide that information and kind of streamline the process. I do know we have some town staff comments still coming, which we'll obviously review and address when we get them.
Yeah. One question for you that I'd like to maybe have you elaborate on a little bit would be stormwater. And I want, I was hoping that you might be able to describe for the planning board how the level spreaders work in the areas that are kind of shown as squiggly dark lines in the plant set. You know, how, I see, I think the public, they also see these solar panels as impervious areas, and that water's going to be sheet flowing off of them. And how is that water going to be managed? And my understanding is that some of these level spreaders help handle that. So I was hoping maybe you could describe a little bit for that.
Absolutely. Would you mind switching to one of the, I think, like, the erosion control plans in the set? Go on a couple. Oh, that's fine. Go back to the one before. So basically, the DEC, the way they kind of look at this is, you have solar panels. They are elevated off the ground. There's vegetation established below them typically. For us, that's going to be a meadow. We use a fuzz-and-buzz mix, has pollinators, supports the bees and other vegetation. Low-maintenance stuff, we only mow, you know, a couple times a year. But as the stormwater runoff hits the panels, runs off, hits the ground, and then it's going to follow the way it normally would. Obviously, based on undulations and things like that, stormwater wants to concentrate. The idea is if it hits the panels, it's going to fall off in a concentrated location. For these ones, it's static, so it's always going to be on the same side, and then it's going to kind of drain off where it wants to go. So what we do is we incorporate level spreaders along the contour, so they're level. And so as that water runs off the panels, hits those level spreaders, it then restores it to a sheet-flow condition and lets it flow, you know, over the next portion to help try and promote groundwater recharge. It's basically like a grass filter strip practice that you would use. That's what the DEC has said it's based off of. If you're below 8% and the panels naturally maintain sheet-flow condition based on the topography, you don't need to do level spreaders at all. However, this site has a little bit, oh, that's perfect. This site has a little bit of areas where it starts to concentrate as the water moves this way, the north end of the site, where we have some tributaries and take, there's a lot of other runoff before it runs under the throughway to the north of us. So these basically all get installed level along the contour. So as runoff falls off this panel, it flows that way, hits the level spreader, and then basically does like a filter strip practice. This allows us to basically maintain this condition while doing minimal site grading, mass earth moving. We can basically go in and just cut these in where we need to. The site topography is a little interesting here, but we are below 8% pretty much across the board on this. If we didn't have some of this kind of natural concentration of drainage, we wouldn't even be proposing level spreaders. We do a lot of stuff in the, you know, with areas with a lot more significant slopes, and with the new regulations, they actually allow us to go up to like 30, 33% as long as we can maintain a sheet-flow condition. And then they have certain spacings that they request you to do as you get higher and higher slopes. So for this one particularly, again, we're just trying to maintain the existing drainage patterns and put them where appropriate, or we think water might concentrate.
Yeah, thank you. I do have, just for the planning board's benefit, maybe even the public's, I did an overlay of the two plans of the overall site plan, and what you're seeing here on the screen, the two different colors, it's not the easiest thing to see, but the green line work is the updated line work. This is the plan set that was submitted in May of 2025. The red line work is the plan that was considered or that was submitted back in the spring of 2024. So you can see the change in extent, right? You have, as the applicant described, you've got a little more of the, you've got more of the panels on the south end here, and you can see where those red panels have been eliminated now, right? So that, those are no longer being proposed. Anything that you see that's red is no longer part of the project. Anyway, with that, I'll defer, go to you, Joe. Go to you.
The area across the wetlands, James, I know you're not technically disturbing it, but, so they remain wetlands, that everything can grow in there that wasn't there before?
Yep.
It seems like there's a lot of shade that would change the dynamic of that.
So you're in these federal lands, you're not allowed to do ground disturbance. We're allowed to cut all the trees down. We're allowed to grind all the stumps flush with the ground, so there's no growth or vegetation or shading occurring from that. So basically, we take all the trees and vegetation out. You don't disturb the grounds, the hydro soils and stuff that the Army Corps is concerned with. So yeah, so if you work on mats and you don't disturb that, you're only driving posts. It's like driving posts into any boardwalk through wetland, it's allowable action as long as you're following the right sequence of construction to do this. We've done it on several of our projects. Generally, what we'll do is if, if the, or if the Army Corps doesn't issue an AJD where there's isolated, because if they're isolated, then this goes away, and we don't need to worry about them at all, because they're not considered there at all. If they do take regulation of them, what we'll do is they'll, they have our plan set, there's notes and sequences on our plans, assuming that they will regulate them. And typically, the permit reviewer will either issue a no permit required for this, if we wanted to hang all the electrical lines above, or again, if they allow us to, or if, whether or not they determine if we need to permit the electrical trenching. But again, it doesn't result in a loss of that, so it's not, we don't have to do mitigation for it. It's really just a construction sequencing thing. And again, we'll provide all the documentation well before we, you know, have you guys approve the project or, you know, sign the MS4, but it is allowable.
These are fixed panels? They don't rotate with the sun or?
Correct. These ones all face south. If you see the ones that rotate, I think, like on our other project that we're not pursuing anymore, those are all routing north-south rows, because they track east-to-west and lay flat in the day.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Board, Joe, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. How is the power going to be connected to the local utility?
I'm going to let Victor handle that one.
Good evening. So the process through which we have our interconnection is what it's called when we link up with the utility reviewed is called a Cesar process. When there is available capacity in the interconnection queue, which, when we say available capacity, that means basically there's room on the existing utility infrastructure to support...
I can barely hear you.
Sorry, there's room on the existing utility infrastructure to support additional capacity. We're able to make application to the utility, have the project reviewed, and they will confirm if they can or cannot support that. So we did that review for our Victor project. They confirmed that there is, in fact, capacity, and we would link up the generation on this site to the existing, to the existing utility grid through what's called the point of interconnection, and those are shown on the interconnection poles here. There's five or six utility poles down there, and the point of interconnection is designed in compliance with the SIR or the standard, standardized interconnection requirements, and those are, those are a set of rules and regulations set forth by the New York State Public Service Commission.
So that's one of the big concerns I have. The solar farms themselves are rather ubiquitous. I think we've kind of gotten used to that, but that interconnection point with the pole farm of six or eight poles with a different apparatus mount is pretty ugly. And if we're talking about maintaining the character of the neighborhood, certainly citing the panels themselves up on the hill, virtually out of sight, is pretty decent. But then, if we have that pole farm, if you will, right down by the roadway, I think that sort of degrades from the character of the neighborhood.
So these poles are spaced 50 feet on center, so...
I'm sorry?
They're spaced about 50 feet on center. So you have a pole, and then you have 50 feet up the drive, and then a pole, and then 50 feet. So the poles go midway up over...
And they're 40 feet tall?
They're 40 feet tall. So what I would probably suggest is we can provide a visualization of what this will look like, a photorealistic visualization of this location from a couple vantage points along the road here, because I think that's, like, we agree with you that that's really the one piece of the project that will be visible as you drive by the road. Obviously, it won't have any visibility to people far away, but you will notice it. But they are just typical utility poles with the kind of double-bucket transformers is what they look like.
I think that would be useful, the characterization, and certainly have them spread out like that rather than clustered like I've seen on other sites. I think that would be beneficial.
No, they have to. I think the closest we've ever done is 30, but typically, the last two for the utility require that they're 50 feet apart. I think we can go down to 30 on ours, if I'm not mistaken, occasionally.
Right. You have to get permission from the utility, but we only do that if we're space constrained. We would keep our 50 feet pole spacing in this instance.
Okay, yeah, that visual characterization, I think, would be useful. The other, the other point I have is, again, sort of relative to what it looks like, and I'm looking at Bruce Sarecki's comments and your response, and I agree with your assessment that with the leaf-on conditions, the, there's not a problem in the 300-foot or the other buffer. I think your characterization of the off-leaf condition is marginal at best, and I would look for some sort of a compromise of maybe maintaining the deciduous trees and the brush interspersed with some, with some fir trees, just to make certain, I think, that over the long term, we maintain non-visibility for those neighbors that are close to the site. Some sort of compromise.
So are you talking about just, so the neighbor to the west, obviously, this is all wooded, there's, you know, a mix of the brush and, like, mature trees here. This side here to the east, obviously, is just brush with smaller diameter trees.
And I think that's the pictures that you gave us, correct?
Correct. I gave you pictures to the residence to the east. I can provide you with some to the west, so you can get a feel of what that looks like. I know we have one from, like, here looking this way at it.
No, I think the one, the second one on the bottom there, I think interspersing some fir trees in there, I think, would be beneficial. I don't think to the extent that you had in the original plan, but certainly enhancing what's there now, I think, would be appropriate.
Sure. I think we can certainly put some of those trees back here, kind of along like the setback line, a little bit away from that existing brush. I would think we'll just maintain that completely, but then kind of create more of a permanent screen from the backyard of that residence, I think.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I think we can certainly incorporate that.
And then, the final is more technical. The inverters, they going to look sort of like bigger versions of the power supplies we see in underground, like, in the neighborhoods? The boxes and all are, how big are they going to be?
The transformers kind of look like that. They'll be a little bit bigger unit typically. I believe the inverters here are using string inverters, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we have to check, because we can certainly provide equipment specifications that will show on it.
Yeah, it would either be, if they're string inverters, it's basically a long concrete pad with a rack that's installed like three or four feet up, and then it's a bunch of little, like, you ever see, like, one of those E1 pump boxes? It's kind of similar to that, and just a whole series of those. If it's the bigger inverters, it basically looks like a big, you know, probably like a four-by-12-by-eight-foot-tall metal box, kind of like a hot box for water service.
And they're, yeah, okay, I think that's good. Thank you.
Is there any intention of storing electricity on site, or does all the electricity flow to the...
No, there are no batteries proposed with this, with this application. So a lot of the main concerns of a lot of the towns with, you know, the battery energy storage systems, you'll hear best systems a lot, we don't have those, worry about the battery fires.
Very good. And then I agree with Joe's other comments around the viewshed and the screening where a couple... Okay, Scott?
I just had a couple of questions on the drainage aspect of things. You mentioned the level spreaders, and I think that's an interesting approach. If I read your map correctly, you're not regrading the site. You're keeping the contours the way it pretty much is, right?
Correct, yeah. The only regrading we're doing is to, when we reconstruct the drive, to get it below 10% to meet town standards. I believe it's like 10 and a half right now, but that was a fire marshal comment from last time. And then just a little bit of grading we need to do to install the access drive, and then to get that gravel to go back toward our stormwater system.
Okay, so then the level spreaders are just following the contours?
Exactly. We're just basically going out there, once we, you know, take down the vegetation, probably do like a, you know, like a cleanup, obviously, for any, like, low spots of the site, re-vegetate it, and then they put those in before they even put the panels in, because obviously, putting them in after gets a little bit tricky.
Okay. Regarding noise, I think I saw that you had various receptor points around there where you took readings, and then I think I heard you say that you, like, mathematically create the noise then, that the inverter would make during the day hours at a particular location, and then you mathematically process that with respect to these ambient noise levels? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, the noise study is, it's very simplistic. It has the equations and things right in it. I'm sure, Scott, you've done the same.
I just wanted to make sure I understood from a qualitative perspective that's what you do. You don't exactly set up an inverter, per se, then, and have it make noise and then walk away from that and take readings.
We let the, we let the manufacturer do the noise in a controlled setting, so the string inverters, I believe, is the ones we were using. The manufacturer can provide specification sheets with how much noise they generate at a certain distance. So it'll just generate, say, 60 decibels at three feet. So if I'm three feet from it, it sounds like 60 decibels. And then as, I believe, every time you double the distance from there, it goes down three or five decibels.
So that's an accepted practice then, to do it that way?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I have no more questions.
Okay. Thanks, James. I want to open it to the public, because this is a public hearing, and there are probably people who are interested in commenting, so if anyone is, please step up, name, address, and comment or question.
James Gray, 816 Main Street Fishers. I'm the property to the east there. From what I hear now, because I don't know a lot about these new plans, but it's the same panels we're using. They're fixed panels.
Fixed panels.
My house is subjected to 80, no, it's 100 hours altogether, 60 hours every year, green level, radiation or glare, and 40 hours of yellow. Is that acceptable for the town to allow that?
I can't answer that personally.
Do you know what it is? Do you remember what the yellow glare is?
So we're in the process, the town engineer's in the process of reviewing the application. That's part of what we're looking at, yes.
To do what with it?
Evaluate.
To make an evaluation, to be able to answer your question.
All right. Why do you fear that's going to happen? Do we know?
Well...
Just curious.
Couple weeks.
Okay. The other thing is, obviously, the decibels of the inverter being positioned near my house. I suggest they go over to the neighbor's house that sold this property, had this put and had this put in, but I don't think forty-five decibels is an acceptable level of sound. I told them to twenty-four, you know, all daylight hours. Would you consider that something you want at your house? Forty-five decibels of sound during the daylight?
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is, the impact is gonna have an value to the property. Obviously, it's not gonna do anything to help that out. And the drainage, I'm not so sure what these level spreaders exactly do, or how they're gonna affect, because it's a lot of water that comes out that field to my house. Can you go back to the other, was the first drawing you had up there with the blue lines on it, drawing drainage?
Was that on yours, Wes?
It was like a north-south orient.
At that one, yeah.
Now, that blue, the...
This one down here?
Yeah. What is that proposal there?
Can anybody tell me what that is?
Yeah, that's the, that's the time concentration path for that watershed. So, that's just the farthest point in that watershed, based on topography, that it takes for it to drain down the hill for stormwater. In that buffer area, we're not proposing to do any grading or change the drainage patterns in any way, just staying on that three hundred foot buffer. So, we're not sending any more water or taking any more water away from where it's going to bed.
It seems more directional arrow than it is a...
Because that's not where the water flows at all.
Where, where'd you...
Water flows from this, towards my house and towards, I'm not sure what that little spot there is, because you can't read anything. But there's a significant amount of water already, and I'm sure these diffusers or whatever, and these panels are not gonna help the situation any better. I, I just can't take any more water coming out that field.
I'm sure the engineer will be taking a look at that carefully as well.
And that's it, huh? Um, let me see what else. Yeah, the biggest thing is obviously gonna be, what, what's the timeframe it's gonna take to put this thing in, that we're gonna have to deal with all this noise?
Instruction period?
Yeah.
James?
Six, six to twelve months.
Six to twelve months.
And are you talking about with the vegetation and no, no view of these? The vegetation for about five months out of the year here in upstate New York, maybe six. So, the rest of it, we're gonna have, obviously, a clear view of all these. This house over here, not so much, because he's got forest here, but all this right here is open, basically fallow field that's mainly just weeds in it. So, as far as a view, you don't really, you're not stopping anything from...
So, the snow is gonna, the snow is gonna knock the brush and all that down quite a bit?
Yes.
Oh, well, yeah, there's really no, there's no high brush to speak of in, with regards to this area, because you didn't have these panels last time. You moved them basically from here to over here. There is nothing blocking that view right there. A row of...
Silver maple trees.
They don't, they aren't very thick trees.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
We have some photos of a view from where the vehicle turnaround is to the southeast.
Vehicle turnaround, where?
If you could look at this and tell me, is that your house in the background? And Manny West can put it up on the screen. Come on up here. Is that your house in the woods there, with the chimney and the roof?
I think so. I don't know where that is.
It's looking southeast from the center of the property where the vehicle turnaround is being proposed.
Oh, did that vehicle turn around?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I assume that's my house.
Okay. I figured it was. Trying to get a sense of where you are.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, Susie, can you bring up Wes's? So, it's labeled as photo two.
Photo two?
Or that's one, but it's the same house, presumably. So, this house is in here. I think there's a chimney on the roof of this house, right about there, and then there's another portion of the house here, I believe. Correct?
Yeah, you're, that's coming from a, from a north angle, yeah.
Yeah.
I bet.
Okay. So, this is the field I think you're talking about?
Yeah, and it goes further over this way.
Okay. That would be there.
Because that, being the back of my house, you're coming way over here towards...
Can we go back one?
The angle is.
Photo one.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back one more, just to orient. Right, so here's, here's the overall, here's the overall image, right, and we've got two vantage points. These red spots here are where our photos one and two, right? So, if I bring up photo one, that's this one.
It's the southerly of the two photos, correct?
That's a leaf-off condition.
Yeah, that's looking directly east towards your house.
And it's taking it, I know, these panels are eleven feet tall, and it's taking it, what, shoulder height?
Oh, yeah, I'm not trying to portray that it's where you're gonna see it. I just want to get a sense of what you're looking through, which is a field.
Oh, yeah, that part of it, right. We have a deck, but you can't see it. The deck is, there's the roof line right there, so I'm standing right basically at the top of those.
Okay.
That brush.
I'm, I'm looking for context. You've brought up a few points, and I just want to make sure we all understand from what we've given.
You're welcome to stop by, take a look, any, anywhere.
I think I will. So, I've already been up the driveway looking around, but now that I see where you're...
That's better now, too.
Yeah.
I don't know when you came up, but it was pretty rough.
Right, I'm sure. Okay. Anything else? Do you have questions, comments?
Oh, I'm not excited. I'm not excited what it's gonna do to the value of my property, obviously, and I'm not sure why we're gonna pursue that yet, but I guess we'll see what you guys plan on going with it.
Okay.
Don't be fair, right?
Thank you very much. Next, anyone else have comments?
I'm Tracy Gray, Jake's wife, who just spoke. My concern is noise.
Did you bring the microphone down?
My concern is noise. I work from home every day for the University of Rochester Medical Center, and I train providers. I'm on the phone anywhere between six to eight to ten hours a day, and sitting in my home and listening to a forty-five or sixty-five, whatever low hum decimal, is not very exciting to me either. I've, myself, have done my own research, and I've gone out to other fields and stood next to these things, and there's a vibration, and if any of you have not done that, I suggest you do. And not just for ten minutes. Set a chair up and sit there for about an hour, and see how you feel after you walk away from these things. We're not opposed to clean, clean energy. We think it's great. I don't want it next to my house. Also, the drainage, the way they have those lines drawn, is just not accurate. It flows from the east, right off of our property, right down our driveway, and as for someone who's been up our driveway, it's like waterfalls. We have water coming up out of our ground, like, looks like Texas oil. Our whole backyard right now is sponge. It's a wetland back there. They're gonna put cement down to hold these panels up? Last I knew, cement does not, water is not poured through cement.
I believe what the app again has reflected on is they're putting posts in the ground, but no big concrete pads.
Yeah.
Accurate, James?
Just, just for the equipment pads.
For the equipment pads, okay. So, concrete for the equipment pads, all the panels themselves will be pretty small.
The other thing is, in my backyard, I have a pool. I have gardens. I'm not looking to be in my backyard and have radiation, you know, April through October, and not be able to go out in my own backyard, where I've lived for twenty-two plus years, and not garden or swim. And I'd also like to know where the fire road is for up here, because they, we've had summers where it's been very dry. If that catches, if anything catches fire up there, my house is gone, and surrounding houses in that area. Most of this is drainage, noise, the inconvenience of a year of this, the value on my property, and the overall health of the environment up there. We have a lot of natural, you know, deer, all sorts of animals. There's so many other places this thing could go, and I just, it's very frustrating that you guys are trying to put it next to residential, because you have to change the zoning to do it. And once that zoning gets changed, there's no going back. And if this is so great, I, I'd encourage you to put it next to your own home. Been there for twenty-two years. This is very, very upsetting, and it will change the look. Those forty-foot tall, you know, posts they're gonna put up for the watering, we have neighbors right below, right up at the Camparelli's. That's their, that's right next to their property. I'm not sure they wanna look at that. We have mending people on the other side. I'm not sure they're too excited about this. I don't know if how Mr. Galasano feels, but I would think he probably is not too excited. This is very frustrating that this is trying to, they're trying to slide this under the hood. We have a gravel pit. These things could go in. Victor gravel pit. No one would even see them. It'd be fantastic. The whole town would benefit from it. I do not understand why it has to go here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I am Bull Smith. I'm eighty-ten Main Street Fishers, and if, if we could, please go back to the slide with the red and blue lines on it.
There you go.
So, a, a couple of questions that I have are, the, the blue line that Jake brought up, that supposedly shows the drainage.
There's a laser, if you care to use it.
Uh-huh. Yeah. This guy here goes right straight into my pond, which isn't really totally exactly what happens, but I can't read what that says right there. Does, does anybody have a clear shot of that?
Yeah, probably, I think.
Wes is gonna...
Okay. And then another thing I was, I, I understand what is being said about the wetlands and, and driving piles into them. What about wildlife that uses those, the birds, the snakes, the turtles, the frogs? They're all up there. What happens to them? And as Tracy and Jake are pointing out, this monstrosity is not gonna help the value of any of the properties around here at all. And you've all been there a long time. I'm only seventeen years, but it's, it's, it doesn't fit with the neighborhood. Don't even come close. And it's really depressing when you think about it, but this, if, I'm really interested in why my pond is, is signaled out here, or signaled out, and would really like to know what that says.
Says existing off-site pond.
Existing off-site pond.
Above it, it says analysis point B.
Analysis point B?
Yeah.
Adam, you can give through the microphone there. That would help.
I'm just reading it off the screen there.
Yeah, I know, but nobody can hear you on the mic. Lisa won't be able to hear you anyway.
So...
Yeah, that says that analysis point B, existing off-site pond.
What, what exactly is an analysis point?
Turn this on. I think it might be helpful if, James, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Could you describe a little bit more what this map is intended to, intended to reflect? So, you're gonna, you're gonna have to let James come to the microphone.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So, as part of our stormwater requirements, that you guys, I'm sure all are aware of, with the DEC, we have to comply with a number of criteria to being compliant with the general stormwater permit. The technical stuff is all kind of summarized in the DEC Stormwater Design Manual. It basically boils down to five criteria, three of which are for quantity control, two of which are for quality. This map is in reference to the quantity control aspect, and what we need to do is, we have to basically take runoff from our site and understand where it goes, so that we compare our pre-existing condition to our post-construction condition, to make sure that we are increasing any of the peak runoff rates. Basically, if we're discharging a one cubic feet per second under existing conditions, we can't discharge more than one cubic feet under proposed conditions. This blue line is not intended to represent how all water flows in this wa, in this sub-area, but it is, is representative of all the water that gets to that pond based on topography and based on the information that we have GIS available, aerials, and things of that nature.
Are these, are these red lines showing like a, what do we wanna call it? A drainage area?
Yeah, it's a, like a subcatchment of the overall project. So, we basically set a number of analysis points. We have one up at the north end, I believe this is A. One down here is B, and then we have another one over here, C, where a little bit runs off this way that goes back down into the creek, whereas this all goes north and then goes onto the thruway. And then this makes its way to the pond. If you follow the pond, I believe it continues to go down the road a little bit before, again, it makes its way into the, the creek that wraps around here.
So, this is more of schematic in nature, the, the lines, and, or it's not a direct, here's where it's all flowing? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, like if you had, if you have a drop of water that falls here, it's obviously gonna flow down the, the contours and the grid to the little spot in the yard, and where, you know, there's a hundred-year floodplain, and then it eventually gets over that pond, again, based on the existing topography and the GIS information that we have. So, this sub-area today, that all runs down our existing drive, there's a little swale, and then that kind of peters off and, again, follows us down this way. Our stormwater pond, which is right here, is gonna collect our proposed improvements, which is the access drive, the gravel drive, and the small, not impervious from the equipment pads, take it all to that practice, and basically hold it back, and then let it all go through a three-inch orifice, and then trickle down that. So, we're actually gonna be reducing the runoff that gets to this point in terms of rate and volume by slowing it down and holding back the water of our development. It's consistent with basically any sort of development where you're over, and you have to be in compliance with the general stormwater permit.
So, there's no way for it to overflow from where that choke point is?
No, I don't believe even our, there's a two-by-two grate, so if you have a ten-year storm or greater, it starts to go into the grate. There isn't an emergency spillway, but I don't believe we're even discharging the hundred-year through the spillway. So, I believe we are detaining all that and putting it through three-inch orifice for ten-year below, and then I believe we have an eight-inch outfall pipe, still, still smaller than what we normally do, out of that structure for the larger ones. And that's all included, obviously, in the SWIP and the stormwater report that we provided, and if you guys have additional questions, I'm sure me and Wes will have ample opportunities to discuss.
Well, these public comments will be on the record in the meeting minutes. I would suspect that you'll wanna address those once they're recorded and...
Yes, absolutely.
And then get that on the record for, for everyone to understand that we are looking to address those.
If I may?
Sure.
Water that comes off this hill, comes down, as he indicated, that, you know, if it, a raindrop hits here, it comes down as straight as it can, but there basically is this property, this property, this property, and then all along the flagpole driveway that Jake and Tracy have. When it rains hard, it's all water down here. There's no public facility to get rid of it. At times, it's a foot and a half deep right along the, our line here. It, this, all these panels up here, it's, it's, I, unless you build one hell of a big pond right there, it's, it's gonna get real, real bad down here. Our property right now, I can just barely walk across my lawn without sinking in, and it doesn't seem like the, the rain is gonna get any better. It's, this, it, they're making it sound too simple, and I never told anybody they could use my pond to check on anything. I'm not really happy about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Got a question also.
Hang on.
Something on I.
Typical neighbor. He said all this water's gonna run down here, basically by the, the driveway they're putting in? Did I catch that correctly?
No, I, no, what he was saying is that if there was, if there was a drop of water that fell in one particular location...
One of the gentlemen from North Bud or wherever they are.
That's, that's exactly what I was, I was characterizing what Mr. Kretko said from BMSO.
He said a bunch of water is gonna come down over here and, here, and where is the planet going from here? There's no, there's no sewer anywhere on the road. No gutters, there's no swale. Yeah, I'm not sure.
So, the Aricoay Creek crossing is where?
Aricoay Creek's across the street.
Directly across the street.
Well, it goes under the road, under a bridge.
Under the...
Is that to the west?
I can tell you right now, if any comments that are not at the microphone, I will not be able to hear on the recording, so it will not be part of the minutes, just so you know, just the way the microphones are.
So, the water that comes, the Aricoay Creek's across Main Street Fishers on the other side. The only way it gets there is through permeation through the ground, you know, gravity. There's no, there's no creek flow, there's no pipes or anything. So, this isn't gonna improve any of the water flow currently, anything that's gonna expedite water falling off of the property, because there's no foliage to absorb any water. The other thing, I wanted to get cabinet plans, I called up the message, because I can get that, right? Of all these things, I had, I wanted to compare it to the previous one.
What you need to do is send a email foil request to the town clerk's office, we do information law. They'll send it to me. The plans are quite big, so...
I wasn't sure how to do it. Yeah, I know.
I'll send a Dropbox link, but...
Okay.
Do contact the town clerk's office.
I did, but I didn't go through...
Okay.
You'll get electronic copies this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't expect it from you. And that's the biggest concern, obviously, is the value of the property and the radiation coming off of these things, the glare.
Okay, sounds like we have at least two more people that are interested in speaking.
You were mine first, please Captain.
Short line. Good evening, I'm Jack Van Boerse, president of Van Boerse Farms, and who in your thing here. When the thruway was built, and they came through, they cut off two and a half acres of our farm, which is now landlocked. And the land itself has a crook in it, woods, and a stream, so it's scenic. And we always assumed that in zoned up in the R, that eventually if they ever developed the land back there, we would be able to gain access to our land. And the current plan proposal for that thirty-five acres of solar panels, the way it's set up is going to destroy this land of every of any desirability from what they're going to do. So I don't know what they changed on their plans, but the ones that I have, the, we would have, if you look at our land, it's going to be like a wall between our land and the solar panels. They're gonna have an eight-foot fence twenty-five feet from our line, and right behind there, they're gonna have twelve-foot solar panels. So this is really going to be a terrible situation for this scenic piece of land. So the, I looked up, I didn't know what a O1-SU-2024 was, special use.
Special use permit, yeah.
Yeah, so the last sentence of the special use permit, it says, "It is subject to conditions that ensure the use aligns with the zoning ordinance and doesn't negatively impact the neighborhood." In this case, it certainly has a negative impact on Mr. and Mrs. Gray, Van Boerse Farms, and other neighbors. So if we are to believe what's in this, then I think it's pretty cutting right by the situation. But of course, there's a lot of illegal things going in, but from what I read. Anyways, I appreciate your consideration and have a nice night.
Thank you.
Your turn. I'm asking Sharon to go, you go first, I'll be quick. How's everybody doing? Matthew Ray, I represent Mr. Galassano and his property. First and foremost, I realize he's a Mendon resident, not Victor, but I do know the town of Mendon has reached out with their concerns, and I don't know if that's already been made part of the record or probably minutes.
We have a copy of their letter, yes.
Okay. Is there a plan that, I don't know if they have a formal engineer, but that there will be consideration that they, even though again they're outside the property, but their concerns from their perspective will be considered and in conjunction with your review, or?
Yeah, absolutely. The town of Mendon's letter here dated June ninth, right? They had three bullet points that they were concerned about. Number one, stormwater runoff. Number two, property values, and number three, visual glare. So those are certainly things that we've already heard here tonight that were concerns of residents.
Okay, but they won't be doing any other further support of the review or consideration for?
The town of Mendon, no.
Mendon's there, okay.
This does not go before them for review?
Understood.
They're interested, obviously, for their citizens.
Okay, understood. Number two, question was posed whether or not he's in favor of it. He's not in favor of it in the fact of if it does impact his property value, if it does impact his neighbor's property value, he's not supportive of it on that statement or that behalf. There was the comment, though, I'm not totally clear about the runoff into the creek. The creek does run right through the middle of his property, even though it sits on the other side of Main Street Fishers, comes under the road through the Highlands property, right through the middle of his. On a regular basis, it does flow, so added water will not be a good thing if it does flood into his yard. And then the fourth thing is just with visibility, we know the Highlands property up at the corner, the boundary line, and I don't know if you want me to use the pointer, but right around there, that is pretty cleared out. As I read the BME report that was put out there, it looks like at that corner, it gives them full weight and authority to kind of clear out one hundred percent of the brush, the trees, et cetera. There are no evergreens, there's no nothing at that corner. You know, we don't have the same vantage point as Adam or the Grays do, or I believe it was the Grays, relative to that property, but at the same time, if they're given, you know, full authority to clear that out. My one consideration or comment just on record would be that with the hundred-foot setback, I thought the comment was they only need twenty feet of access around the boundary of the solar panels, and then maybe twenty feet more, unless I misunderstood the comment I made. Twenty plus twenty is forty, that's an additional sixty feet, that I would just ask if any of that remaining access could not be cleared out. That just adds to the, you know, the blocking of the view or lack of visibility that we would see from his property throughout the course of the year. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Certainly noted.
Adam Brunner, I live at 137 Tennyson Way, which is the property right to the west of it right there. I will say, a couple of questions I had, obviously concerned about the same thing, water runoff. My backyard is completely soaked now. The path that goes along the property line has two inches of water in it now. I think that's, you know, that's been mentioned. Obviously glare. All of our bedrooms on the second story face over here. I can stand at my kitchen table, over my kitchen sink, and see the property line here. There's no vegetation in certain sections between my house, my pool, and the property line there. I would like to see kind of the complete tree survey done. I think if you look at their tree removal plan, it gives the impression that there's twenty-three acres that don't have six-inch-plus trees on them. I would say the majority of that property has those types of trees scattered throughout it. So if they're gonna clearcut all of that, how does that coincide with the code that says, you know, only ten percent of the property can kind of be clearcut and remove trees of that size? So I would like to see kind of a complete survey done of the property to show that. With the Glint and glare study, section two point four says, "The obstruction tool was used to simulate eight-foot-tall trees to be planted around the east, west, and north perimeters of the proper way." That wasn't on the site plans at all. So I think there's a large inconsistency between kind of this site study that was presented and what the actual site plan calls for. So I'd like to, you know, understand that discrepancy. Did they assume eight-foot tree coverage along the whole thing and whether I can see it, and then remove that in that site plan? So that's one of the concerns I have. Obviously, kind of setbacks, natural vegetation, the more coverage we can get, the better. I'm honestly really concerned about glare. As I said, all of our bedrooms are on the second story. All of them overlook all of that. So, you know, losing the foliage, we can see the thruway from our front door. This is all on the back. Additionally, they mentioned the setback is from our primary residents. We have two structures on our property, one of which is closer to the property line that they're not using for the setback, so I ask to take that into consideration as well. Rainwater mitigation, we talked about, screening. I think property value everybody's concerned about. I think it comes down to, do you let one landowner monetize their property to the detriment of all of the other landowners around them? And to the extent the board makes that decision, you know, I asked them to look into, before going into this partnership with Norbit, to look at some of their other projects they've entered into and their behavior in those specifically. Kind of there's a ruling for the Northern District of New York on the town of Enfield and Coventry, where basically they were preliminary, Norbit refused to hook up to the public utilities, and they used that to get more money out of the partner they were with. They had to have a preliminary injunction ruled against them. They had to put up a hundred thousand dollars to the state to do that. So I just, I'd like the board to look into that. A lot of these times, things don't go well, there's cost overruns. In that case, the partner that they, the other investor, had invested forty-seven million dollars, hired a Wall Street law firm, were able to bring suit and get that connected. What happens in our area if that happens here? Who's gonna be stuck with that? So I just ask the board to consider Norbit's previous actions on these solar farms when expenses are more than expected and things don't go well. Because we can come up here and say anything, but I think their track record will show how they act in those previous situations. And again, happy to provide any photos or have anybody over and look at it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Drew's here.
Drew Kuzamano, Victor Town Board. I just wanted to first identify, as part of the informal, informal review process, the fire department's involved in providing that feedback 'cause I was certainly a member of the town board that took action on the zoning overlay changes. I have identified a conflict of interest with the fire department. So I just wanted to declare that. And then, so for example, the meeting this Thursday, you know, I have refrained from participating in that. Certainly, I'm part of an officer group in my full-time employment with the Fishers Fire District that offers me an opportunity to review and provide feedback. And immediately upon receiving that on the side of the firehouse, I recused myself so that I wouldn't be providing feedback from two sides. From my town board perspective, certainly we've taken some action in the past as related to the moratorium and coming out of that. The only thing I would add from a personal perspective and from my town board perspective is oftentimes, and without disrespect to previous decisions and previous public comments, sometimes I sit on that side of it and I say to myself, "Yeah, they just don't want the project. The project's reasonable, the project makes sense, they just don't want it." And that's a fair perspective. I think that the comments being made by residents in the room tonight, I think that these are sound, reasonable, and very well-thought-out concerns, and I really do hope that all of them are considered, you know, seriously because I think that, you know, these are certainly not happenstance or, you know, "Yeah, you know, I don't like this, so I wanna complain about it." I think that these are some legitimate things, the noise, the view shot, and I think that, you know, should get some real good consideration. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Drew. Anyone else? James, either of you like to respond to any, what, thing you've heard so far?
I'll make a couple comments. I guess first of all, drainage and talking about the flow area down here, this is a hundred-year floodplain, so it's obviously susceptible to flooding during storm events. Water that runs off this side goes into the creek this way, this little bit that goes through, I believe, the Galassanos' property here, again, makes its way down into that creek. So there's only this small portion going that way. We're not taking more runoff to the south. All the solar panels all flow north and gets into this point here that goes under the thruway, cross through that system, and then into, I believe, more wetlands on the north side of the thruway. In regards to the screening and the vegetation comment about like removing the trees, generally, we try and clear about two hundred feet if we can from the panels, just from sightlines to optimize how the panels work. We've gone down to like fifty in some locations, but generally, the hundred-foot is our minimum that we can make them work where they really start to lose some efficiency. So obviously up here, there's not any other residences to the north, so there are not really any more significant impacts up here. And then on the property, I believe to the Galassanos' house, which sits about eight-hundred-and-fifty feet from our property line, they do have about two to three hundred more feet of that kind of brush wooded mix between our property before it gets to kind of their lawn area and then the rest of the way to their house. So there is some existing vegetation, obviously, in there. It's like that. I think kind of the rest of the comments generally speak for themselves, but we'll provide some additional information to address, you know, some of the comments we didn't discuss further and, you know, the board's concerns.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
Thank you. Well, anyone else have any thoughts, comments before we move on to the next item?
Sorry, just forgot to stop. Tracy Gray again, 8216 Main Street Fishers. Another thing I'd like, if you could kindly think about, as you were listening earlier to the two gentlemen with the barn on Taylor Road, imagine in the wintertime looking out at these things. That's all you see. Because seven to eight months out of the year, it's barren up there until, you know, spring comes and things start blooming and this and that. And even so, we have low vegetation. It's not like we've got hundred-foot trees up there and pines and all of this. That's what I'm gonna look out on as I'm sitting on my deck or at my pool or playing in my garden. That's what I'm looking at. Forty-two acres of these giant solar panels. So just like you to keep that in the back of your thought. Thank you.
I think we all appreciate that perspective. Thanks for your comment. Well, there's certainly a lot more to discuss on this. There's some things that the applicant has heard tonight, and so as the board that will be considering and trying to respond to. So we'll leave the public hearing open so that there's additional opportunity to comment and what they come back with and what the developer comes back with. So with that, I think we can finish our conversation for tonight and move on to the next item. So thank you all for coming. I appreciate your input, and the board certainly takes everything seriously that we hear. So with that, we have one last item on the agenda. Anyone need to take a break before we... Before we go on to the next one?
It's also...
All right. All right, last item for this evening, Nicolau subdivision. Still an open public hearing, and owner Keith Nicolau was here. And the applicant's requesting approval developed forty-two points for acres into seven lots with driveways coming off Blazy Road. This is the second step in the new subdivision. Sketch plan was acknowledged complete August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, planning board members. Yeah, I'm John Hato from Land Tech Surveying and Planning Rochester, continuing on with our quest to obtain a seeker determination and preliminary site plan approvals from the planning board. In addition, we did receive today a letter from La Bella providing additional review comments, and I looked over them quick. I don't have a straight answer for each one right now, but they all seem reasonable, and I believe we can address them sufficiently. Just wondered if there were any additional questions about the project or how to move forward?
I think we last meeting, we met, I think Wes had some additional things to address and...
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we went through part two of the environmental assessment form, as you recall, and we had been in the process of updating our letter, which we finalized today. I think the majority of the comments that we had updated today have been, the majority have been satisfied, right? And there's a couple of items that maybe are outstanding that we would feel reasonably comfortable if the planning board wanted to have them get addressed in the final subdivision application. And I think there's maybe one or two comments that we just asked that when they submit preliminary plans for signature, right, so that you can document, so that you have a document that shows, okay, here are the preliminary plans that were approved. I think we're just asking for a few minor changes or notes. So I'm happy to go through a couple of these things. Let's go through... Let's see. So we were looking for some information in the SWIP appendix. There's just some seeding notes. We weren't able to identify the location of the information in the March seventh, twenty twenty-five SWIP... SWIP appendix. And, you know, we'd be happy to be sure that that's addressed when the updated SWIP is provided during the final subdivision review process. Septic systems, we've, we've updated our notes on the septic systems and, um, I think the majority of, of those issues have been addressed, um, and, and maybe just for, for example, right? One of the things that we might want to see if they were to submit preliminary subdivision plans for signature is just be sure that, uh, the information is accurate as to who witnessed the perk test. Right now, I think the, the notes say Brett Gabe from Monroe County Health Department witnessed those, but I'm not sure that that's, uh, completely accurate. And then, I guess the, let's see. For the soils testing, we did note on comment number 14G, applicant to conduct testing as part of the design associated with the final subdivision application. The response indicates that the soil tests will be conducted in the spring of 2025. I'm not sure if those have been scheduled yet or not, but I think we have some information that, that gives us, um, some reasonable confidence that, uh, the design as it, as it's shown today, uh, could be approved as, as a preliminary subdivision plan and that, um, maybe that, maybe even a secret negative declaration could be, um, could be issued by the planning board. It's not, it's not the most comfortable in, in my position, coming from a reviewer and, and the way we traditionally kind of look at the subdivision plans, we, we like to have these designs really kind of, uh, filtered out, the, the information, like the soils information, we have all of that as, as a basis for making a seeker determination and preliminary approval. But if for some reason, I'm, I'm thinking that if, if for some reason the soil infiltration testing doesn't work out the way is, it's anticipated, um, there may need to be a change in the project design that would necessitate revisiting seeker and, um, depending on the extent of the change of the plans, revisiting seeker, um, and, and even, um, you know, changing, changing the design of the plan. So with that, with that in mind, what, what I've done for tonight is I've, I have drafted for your consideration, if you're, if you wanted to entertain it, um, part three of the EAF and, uh, a seeker negative resolution has been drafted, um, along with a reason supporting the determination. But, uh, it's probably up for discussion with you guys as to whether or not you want to go that route today or, or no.
Thoughts, opinions on that?
I guess I have a question for John. John, when do you plan on doing the infiltration testing for the, the system?
As soon as it stops raining, frankly. It's going to be a little while, maybe, maybe in the mid, mid-June. I mean, it depends on the weather, really, you know?
It's about two days till mid-June, probably.
Pardon me?
About two days until mid-June, so.
That, that's true.
And the reason I?
Probably towards the end of June, actually, get dry up.
I just think that's a big, I think that's a big unknown right now. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, I'm, I'm concerned that, as, as was mentioned by Wes, that if those results don't come in and a redesign is necessary and some other design system needs to go in, then that kind of affects what we're somewhat approving tonight. So I, I, I don't feel comfortable with that personally.
And I believe, um, I understand your trepidation. I think we've given the applicant opportunity to get that testing done before or move on as they're requesting with that risk of having to come back.
Mm-hmm.
So, personally, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I would if I was the owner, but as a, as a board, I think I would be okay with moving it forward as they're requesting, but.
Wes, is, is that testing witnessed by, um, town personnel, town representatives as well?
Uh, to my knowledge, it's not. My, for, for, um, septic systems, uh, the town engineer does witness those, those tests, those soil tests, but for infiltration testing, no, I don't, I don't believe the town has anybody witnessed those.
But a licensed engineer has to, has to, um, conduct those.
That would, yeah, that would be my understanding. Yep.
No, could you repeat your comments just?
I couldn't hear any of your input.
Sorry. So the, the applicant has requested to move to, for us to assume, I guess, that's not the right word. Yeah. So I, I guess my opinion is that if that's what they want to do and that's the risk they're willing to take, um, it's unusual, but I, I don't have a problem holding up or not holding up this progress. We've gone through this quite a bit and they've modified the design to seven homes, not eight. I don't have a problem moving this forward as they're requesting with their understanding that something could blow up and they would have to start over in the preliminary plan phase with the proper testing done. We're not going to approve anything final until all that's done. I believe Wes outlined that. I don't, Wes maybe?
Yeah, one of the, one of the conditions in the, in the draft resolution does indicate that they need to address the, the comments in our letter. And our, our letter does acknowledge that the, the soil testing, uh, still needs to be completed. And we've, we, and on page, it's on page five of our letter, applicant to conduct testing as part of the design associated with final subdivision application.
Oh, yes, it will be, certainly we're not going to approve anything without all that engineering taken, uh, you know, completed. And if there's a major change, then we'd have to revisit those plans to make sure that they are, um, thoroughly vetted. So, that's what I'm, that's my opinion.
Just procedurally, like, does it make sense to approve the seeker as a negative deck without Scott's point of?
Right, and that?
Key piece of information.
And I think, I think what Wes was saying was, and I, we had this conversation in staff meeting, but if you see that there's a major change that has to happen, then we need to revisit seeker on top of that. So it's not like seeker's done and we won't come back to it. If this changes, um, is that not meaningfully is a better word for it, but materially, thank you. If this changes materially, the, the outcome of seeker, then certainly we'd revisit that, you know, even if it's one of the sections, you look at and say, well, it goes from minor to major or it changes how the runoff is managed or how the septic systems are maintained or, um, designed, then, and that affects how this whole site plan has to be engineered, then sure, we'd have to revisit it.
Again, it's more of a philosophical question, not necessarily for this applicant, but if there was another applicant before us and we didn't have a traffic study, would we say, well?
No.
Well, we had an approved seeker.
No, but we?
And on the outcome, there were negative implications of a traffic study, we'd revisit it.
So what the applicant has done, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wes, but they've, they're relying on some data they have for septic system percolation tests and soils and extrapolating that to their design for the, um, stormwater.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's my understanding and, and that's kind of the way we've looked at it at Lobella, right? In, in concept, uh, based on the soils feedback we have on the, on the, um, septic system testing, you know? It, it appears that there's going to be infiltration capacity for the infiltration basins.
I mean, in the end, we're not going to approve something that isn't working. And if we can move, allow this process to move forward and with their, I mean, it's clear, along the way, we've had multiple comments and, and, uh, information with our opinion that you're taking a big risk. They're acknowledging they're taking a large risk if something comes along that requires them to bounce backwards again. It's their choice. There's nothing that's mandatory, as I understand it, that this be done in preliminary. It's just strongly recommended and, and frankly prudent, but here's where they are. So, uh, we're not going against, um, the code, I guess, or legal procedural, uh, framework. So, that's my opinion. Um, like I said, I don't necessarily?
It's a while, so it's a informed opinion.
Well, okay. I don't want to, yeah.
I would, I would just add that, you know, for everything that we do in these plans, I take a look at most of the other stuff, drainage areas, the water pressure, grades, the this, the that, there's all some type of measured design basis from which that all comes. And that's absent in this particular component of the project. I also think that if we don't have some type of town eyes on the soil testing, that if soil testing is done, say in August, um, when things are probably as dry as they'll ever be, that may not be representative of how that is going to function during times like today or yesterday, for that matter, uh, in which case, you know, we may have saturated soils and these infiltration ponds may not be infiltrating at all. Um, so I, I'm a conservative engineer and as such, um, for me, I would want to know this data. I would, I would want to know that it was witnessed and that it was accepted by the town so that if I were the design engineer, I would have that on record. In my defense, should there be any problems thereafter? That's how I would look at it. But not everybody's me, I get that.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
There's four of us here, so, I mean, I'm not the sole arbiter of this.
No, no, that's fine.
I'm trying to offer my perspective. That's great, um, that you have, your engineering professional opinion too.
Yep.
Joe, questions, comments on this?
I'm still thinking.
Okay. Al, any other thoughts on that?
Provided that, um, right, final subdivision approval isn't granted until we have a complete understanding and consensus from our design professional, engineering professional, it's adequate.
You could look at it the other way, that if this, I mean, if everything was in hand and we got to final and there was something that was not, that we didn't feel was addressed and/or was discovered that was, uh, that required a design change, you still wouldn't approve them until that was taken care of. So, um, this is that, one of those items. It's not normal, not standard, however you want to look at it. Um, I guess I'm trying to give the applicant some daylight, I guess. So, if you'd like to say something, Mr. Nicolau?
A little bit, thank you. Good evening. I know it's late. You might all know Martin Yanda from BME, who's now retired water expert. Martin used to live on the land when we bought it and Martin hunts that land, he knows it very well. So I've been counseling all along the way, I almost brought him in tonight, said, Martin, would you come in and just speak on behalf? And what I understand from him is that infiltration testing is, is the standard way to do it. Uh, and you can get preliminary approval, subject to final testing, making sure that the town observes it, et cetera. And that's why I thought we're just going along this line and we understand that if design changes need to happen, they'll happen after. But I think we've been here enough many months to get to this point and you guys have been patient with us, we've been patient with you. And so that's our ask, it stays, and we understand what's going on, but I really have relied on Martin a lot. And he said infiltration can be, um, you can get preliminary and then finalize infiltration testing later. If you had design changes, we had to design changes. We've been flexible as we can to this point as well. So that's all I want to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Actually, the, the still, the public hearing is still open. Um, I guess I'd give one opportunity, if anyone's here that has a comment or question, now's a good time. If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. As Mr. Nicolau said, we've seen this a number of times now.
I'll move to close the?
Al moves. Here's second, Joe seconds, all in favor?
I.
Okay. So public hearing's closed. Now I guess I'd, I'd like to hear anyone's thoughts on moving forward with, uh, seeker declaration or, um, what do we have?
Well, aside from the soil testing, is there any other open items for the seeker for us to make a conclusion?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Let me double check. Right, we had, yeah, the impacts on land, impacts on surface water, impacts on groundwater, impacts on flooding, impacts on plant and animals, impacts on ag resources, impacts on energy, noise, odor, and light. Yeah, that's really, I think the soils testing is the only, is the only thing that, uh, only seeker item that, you know, if there, if there is a question mark, that's the one. So, like, for example, traffic, we know traffic isn't, isn't an issue, right? We're, we're well below that threshold.
As Scott's point about timing of the testing?
Mine's not. Go ahead. I just, I couldn't hear you up on the monitor, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Back, I know. Uh, yeah, to Scott's point about timing of testing, um, is, uh, how do we address that? Cause I think that's a valid point.
Well?
In terms of, you know?
They're, they need to test it during, during the final design phase. And if we approve preliminary design tonight, we're in it. And I think John just reflected on, it looks like later this month, that they'd be actually doing the testing and then running the engineering through to final and discovering what it is that they're able to do and confirming or not confirming what their assumptions were on the original testing they had, which was basically perk tests and tests that's on the site. So, that's where they are.
The, the testing that has been asked to be done or I think recommended by Lobella, which is correct, um, is the DEC version of infiltration testing, which is not the same. It's a deeper.
Understood. Yep, yep. They've acknowledged that and I think Wes and probably you have made that comment in the past, so.
Just for Joe's benefit.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board, comments, whatever? Are you okay with me, Wes, I guess, moving forward with seeker first?
Yeah, I would, uh, I would maybe read the secret resolution, see if there's a motion. Maybe there's a second.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I will go through that.
That's going to be?
This one?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, I will read the secret, it's a, this is the draft. It's a seeker negative declaration. I assume that's first revision, R1. So, uh, I'll read this out loud. Seeker resolution, Nicolau subdivision, six-ten, 2025, application five SPS, 2025. Whereas, honor about September 17th, 2024, Secretary of the Town of Victor Planning Board received a preliminary subdivision application from Land Tech Surveying and Planning on behalf of Keith Nicolau, the applicant, to subdivide approximately 42.4 acres on Blazy Road into seven single-family residential lots, including individual onsite septic systems for each lot, entitled Nicolau Subdivision, the project, located on the west side of Blazy Road, tax map seven zero zero one twelve zero zero zero. And whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board preliminarily classified the project as a type-one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act pursuant to secure implementing regulations at the December 10th, 2024 Planning Board meeting and initiated the lead agency coordination process by transmitting part one of the seeker environmental assessment form and project information to involved and interested agencies, including New York State Department of Health, Monroe County Water Authority, and the Ontario County Planning Board. And whereas no involved agencies objected to the planning board being lead agency or 30 days have passed since part one of the EAF was transmitted to them, therefore, the planning board hereby assumes lead agency status. And whereas the planning board as lead agency has carefully reviewed the project, part one of the long environmental assessment form, application materials, including but not limited to the subdivision plan set, engineers report, stormwater pollution prevention planned, and has also carefully reviewed and considered written public comments regarding the proposed project, public comments expressed during the required public hearing for the preliminary subdivision application, consultant and outside agency review comments, including comments from the Ontario County Planning Board, Code Enforcement Office, Stormwater Management Program Manager, Town Highway and Department, Coordinated Fire Service, Town Engineer, Conservation Board, and environmental record concerning the project. And whereas the planning board has caused the completion of parts two and three of the environmental assessment form. of Parts 2 and 3 of the Environmental Assessment Form, including attachments thereto, and has carefully reviewed and considered the same and has not identified the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact. Now therefore be it resolved that no potential significant adverse environmental impacts were identified with the proposed project using the criteria for determining significance identified in 6 NYCRR, Section 6177C1, and in accordance with Section 6177C2 and 3, and based on the hard look, analysis and other information presented in the full EAF Parts 1, 2 and 3, Town of Victor Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed project will not present a potential for a significant adverse environmental impact and hereby issues a negative declaration. And be it further resolved, a notice of declaration, a notice of negative declaration shall be filed and/or published to the extent required by seeker regulations. And this resolution has been prepared in accordance with Article 8 of the New York Environmental Conservation Act. So that's the resolution draft. Does anyone have any comments or requests for change in any of the language or additions? Hearing none. Make a request for a motion for approval of the seeker declaration. I'll move. Al moves. And Joe seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Negative?
Nay.
So 1, 3-1, it passes. And let's see. Need this? All right.
One of the, maybe one of the conditions.
Okay. Do you have a suggested location for that? Or condition preliminary signing?
Probably ongoing.
Ongoing, okay. Right, that's true. All right, so Wes is suggesting that we add, under conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions, that we have the town witness those tests, John? For the test, sorry, not percolation.
Soil infiltration testing.
Infiltration, thank you. Infiltration testing. Okay, now Wes is writing that up for Lisa. And we'll make the appropriate note when we get to it. So for the Nikolov subdivision on Blazy Road, application 5PS, 2024, whereas the planning board made the following findings of fact. And the public hearing was closed today. On number four, Lisa? And there are 16 whereses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby issues a waiver to Section 2915 of the Town's Design and Construction Standards to allow a total of four, four lots to be served by a common driveway, where the standards would otherwise require no more than three lots to be served by a common driveway. And be it further resolved that the preliminary subdivision application of Land Tech Surveying and Planning on behalf of Keith Nikolov, major subdivision, entitled Nikolov subdivision, drawn by Land Tech Surveying, dated September 17th, 2024, received by the Planning Board September 17th, 2024, and revised, last revised, March 7th, 2025. Planning Board application number 5PS, 2024, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the preliminary subdivision plan. Number 1 is standard, 2 is standard, 3, comments on a letter dated September 25th, 2024, from highway superintendent be addressed. I assume they haven't been updated. Number 4, comments on a letter dated December 19th, 2024, from Code Enforcement Officer be addressed. And number 5, that the comments on the letter dated June 10th, 2025, from Lobella Associates be addressed, which Wes just briefly commented on. Number 6, that the comments in a letter dated May 28th, 2025, from Stormwater Manager be addressed. Is that Keith's?
That is, well.
Well, okay. All right, it's highlighted, I wasn't sure whether that's done. And then this is the section I was talking about, conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. 1 is standard, 2 is standard, 3, at the request of planning and building part pre-construction meeting shall be held prior to start of construction. This is preliminary, not final. We don't need number 3, right? 4, all conservation easement markers be shown on final subdivision plans. These are kind of final, aren't they?
I think they wanted the conservation easement marker shown on that final.
On the final plans, okay.
I think it was a little unclear right now.
Okay.
They want to make sure it's on there.
Right, so that can stay. Number 5, that all water services will be, need, will need to be directionally drilled. There shall be no open cut on Blazy Road. Number 6, that a Town of Victor Highway work permit be obtained for work occurring in the town's right-of-way, including driveway installation, culvert crossing, water main crossing. Isn't that also a final?
Yeah, if you want me to remove.
Save that for final approval for the-
Number 6, yep. Did you want number 5 on?
Yeah, that should also be on finals, too. We have 3 at the moment, but we're adding number 4.
Okay.
According to Wes.
Okay, so this condition reads that the town or town's representative witnessed soil testing for proposed infiltration basin features and that testing be performed pursuant to the New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual, Appendix D.
Okay. Do we have anything, is it in your, in Lobella's comments regarding the design, if it changes?
No.
In our opinion, that it should be revisited, you know, seeker and/or plans?
No, that's, if, no, we don't have anything in our comments about that. It's just, that may just be a procedural item that we would need to follow if the situation comes up.
Okay, I didn't know if we needed to document that in this particular resolution?
I, I don't think I would.
Okay. All right, I think there's pretty good understanding of that. So, and be it therefore resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval. So as modified, understanding discussed this evening regarding the procedure for testing and incorporation into the design and its potential impacts or none. Do I hear a motion for approval as modified? I'll move. Al moves. Joe seconds, all in favor? Aye, carry?
Nay.
3-1. Okay. So we're able to move forward with final design. I'll be interested to see how your testing goes, as we all, I'm sure. And you obviously understand the risk, so that's where we are. Okay? Thanks. That's it for this evening, I believe, 9:40. Motion to adjourn, move by Joe, seconded by- or Al, I guess.
I'm alive, I'm alive back here. Not another nay.
All right.
Wednesday, I know it's weird.
Next, when, the, two weeks from Wednesday, tomorrow, next meeting.
Do we note it on my outline?
I thought that was a good add-on.